No.
Okay, I can spread out.
Yeah. That's that's what you want.
No, I'd rather he was here, but if he's not, it's more room for me to hold my crap home.
All right, we will go ahead and get started while everybody's munching. And start with the Public Works Department's annual report.
Thank you, Mayor Cory. Councilmembers, good evening. So here with us this evening, I just want to introduce briefly the Public Works Leadership Team. So starting from the area of Mr. Rick Emmons, he's our Public Works Field Supervisor. He's the leader of Streets and Utility Division. Minister RR Kelly, our Facilities Maintenance Supervisor. Mr. Antonio Vero, our Wastewater Division Supervisor. Chris Plankby, our Water Division Supervisor. Sean Schatz. Our Parks Division Supervisor, of course, the same Indy Sub-Tech back from our CIP Manager at Deputy Public Works. Before we begin, I'm just going to give a brief expectation rundown. So a lot of this is going to be time for questions and answers. So once I get through this brief little intro, it's period, we're going to go through accomplishments and work plans for 2024 by division. I'm not going to read just, there's a lot of information on those slides that was in the packet. So I'm not going to read everything that was in the packet. What I'll do is I'll pause for each division and just open it up for Q and A. And our division supervisors and managers are here to answer any questions that you may have. Because quite frankly, they know their divisions way over mine, so they're happy to entertain any questions. So we, so the annual report is, was completed as a group. So again, shout out to the Public Works Leadership Team for assisting with the confidence they put together for 2023 and putting together their associated 2024 work plan. In terms of the strategic planning component of the Public Works Department, we met as a leadership team plus a subset of staff from each division last fall. And the objective there was to review our 2023 objectives, but primarily to set objectives for 2024. So in the packet, under tab B, you'll see the annual report. And inside that annual report are the objectives for 2024. I will not go through every single one of them, there's 29 objectives. So we'll just touch on the highlights as we move forward. Yeah, I just want to express gratitude and appreciation to the leadership team and their staff for making this, making this happen. The annual report, the strategic plan is, it's the department's plan, it's by no means my plan whatsoever. This was, this was done in large part due to efforts that are being published.
There we go. I will click on it. There you go.
Okay. So just a quick overview, the city level, it's Public Works Department is comprised of five divisions. And amongst those five, in addition to five divisions, there's three admin staff, so like 32 total employees. And of course, across the bottom of the slide, there's the division and the subsequent full-time equivalent, part-time seasonal employees associated with the department. I think you look at that.
It looked like an upgraded sewer.
Oh, yes.
Nice touch.
So in the public works, we may have clicked on something, you just have to remind us to click that.
No, no worries. So the division of the public, or excuse me, the vision of the Public Works Department is to be a gold standard American Public Works Association accredited employer who is efficient in conducting work responsive to issues as well as forward thinking and proactive to minimize future problems. In addition, to be a safe workplace with clear policies and standard operating procedures. So the Public Works Department, we have four overall goals in the department. As I stated, these goals are, it's not about me, it's not about now, it's about supporting, it's about setting up the Public Works Department up for success, ultimately bettering the community and then just advancing the department to be, becoming more of a gold standard employer and department. So page four of the annual report goes through the specific goals and then also starts off on the objectives. And I had to go through every objective because it's provided in the annual report, but I did want to go through.
I know, but I clicked.
No worries. So the Public Works Department, we have four overall goals and they're listed here in the slide. First one is to extract institutional knowledge and track data, excuse me, track work and in essence, collect data. So this is, our objectives are related to standard operating procedure development. Rearing our asset essentials, so that's a, that's a computer program that we use in Public Works to track work orders, to request work. And ultimately, like for our wastewater and water divisions, we'll have assets in there such as pumps, so we'll have useful life and life expectancy, so we could program implemented maintenance work orders as well. And also, we have to meet land copper rule requirements, that's a regulatory requirement that would be included department help. All of those are embedded in that the objective associated goal, what a goal to is enhance workplace culture. So this is related to, you know, safe, anything safety. We're working through a check and checkout procedure for remote operations. So we have folks that work by themselves at our water treatment plant, which is located at the Isopole and periodically on the weekends at our wastewater treatment plant. So the objective associated with that is to have a, again, check and checkout procedures. So in the event, God forbid, somebody were become incapacitated or hurt in a way to, you know, alert a supervisor or something else. And also enhancing workplace culture, objective or associated with prioritizing leadership principles. And the Public Works Department is striving to instill the national leadership principles, which is based on embracing, you know, culture feedback. So having those vulnerable conversations and being open, myself included, to feedback, how good that department is always striving for. The third goal is a shift from reactive, a reactive culture to a proactive culture. This includes furthering the integrated capital improvement program, pavement preservation program, also implementing preventive maintenance programs, which, you know, routine sewer jetting, catch basin cleaning, valve exercising, callback to, and also evaluating equipment replacement and revolving fund or schedule. Just making sure that equipment's on a reasonable replacement timeline. And the last goal is to strengthen relationships both externally and internally. And this, these objectives are associated with completing our utility comp plans, pursuing maintenance collaborations with partner agencies, and then also continuing with our internal Public Works Department newsletter and working across departments. So some highlights from 2023 I'd like to share, these are very high level. So this was the first year that we completed, we had a year with objectives for the entire year. We had 31 objectives for the year, 18 of 31 objectives were completed, seven of 31 we made forward progress on and six were carried over to 2024. And from my perspective, again, a big shout out to the department, this exceeded my expectations. This was the first time, you know, we've had a complete set of objectives for the entire year. So the back that, again, circling back, the expectation is not to be perfect. I mean, it's more important than a flexible plan and a perfect plan. So we made really good progress on our objectives for 2023. Yeah, again, it's just opportunity and momentum moving forward. And just a note for 2024, we have 29 objectives that are listed in the annual report. Some lessons learned from 2023. This is on me, but I need to do more frequent status updates to the department in terms of where we are on the objectives. So I attempted to give quarterly updates, we host a quarterly all enhancement for Public Works. And I was able to provide some of those updates on a few of those meetings, but I need to do a better job at, at just communicating to the department as a whole on what the status is of our objectives. Well, secondly, we had too many goals, we had seven goals for 2023. That made it very cumbersome to communicate internally and externally. So we, we rearranged our goals, simmered them down, simmered them to, simmered them down to four versus the seven. And lastly, we assign objective champions by division rather than employees. And this gives, so we meet bi-monthly as a leadership team. So this allows somebody on the leadership team to be a single point accountability for the objective they volunteered to be champion of. And you'll note that there are champions assigned to each objective, that does not necessarily mean they are assigned to complete the objective, they're just kind of facilitator of the objective. So noteworthy items, this is obviously really impressive, but 4.5 million secured in grants of low interest loans in 2023. Nine certifications obtained by staff. I have them listed if you're curious, just letting them know after the presentation. We, Ara, in his division, installed over 6,000 feet of heat tank across the facility. And then just a noteworthy item, there were 440 work orders completed throughout the department. And this is implementing our asset essentials program. And one other item that I didn't list here, but we continue to embrace and implement the national leadership principles. Again, trying to foster that, that feedback-based leadership program. And some high-level priorities for 2024, continuing to shift from reactive proactive. We are, we are, this is the year that we're going to receive most of our new equipment that's associated with that $1.8 million equipment purchase fund that the, the City Council graciously approved. So a few weeks later, we have a backer truck, so implementing those, routine preventive maintenance programs. Emphasizing on safety, Andy shared this a little bit when we sought approval for the CAREC I on called utility contract. But that's just one example of just putting more safety tools in the toolbox. Our department continues with their weekly safety meetings, toolbox talks as well. And of course, PPE and hard hat, safety things, it's all been implemented and it's been a, it's been a great improvement on that front that started here. On this item, I do want to explain a touch, so we want to create an engineering technician position. The title is still a work in progress. It may be a stat engineer, but just to put it in perspective, Andy's workload in particular. So as of right now, Andy has 19 current projects that value at $14 million. This is a high workload for any project engineer. And I want to emphasize that Andy is not just a project engineer, she's a capital improvement program manager and also a deputy director in the department. So in addition to that, Andy works on policy upgrade updates and taking those big picture planning of the ICIP and pavement preservation program. It's important that Andy has that discretionary time to further those, those programs. And this will come in a later discussion, this is by no means an action item tonight. But we're going to provide you more detail and justification on, on how, why Andy needs more support and current program. So that'll, that'll be forthcoming and is a priority for 2024. I can't click.
Oh, sorry.
So that's it in terms of what I had for the introduction. So this next phase of presentation is going to be more easygoing. And we're just going to basically open it up for questions and answers. And again, we have all the division supervisors and managers here that are capable to help with, with anything. So the first division, which is Public Works Admin, I'm happy to take any Q and A associated with this. And again, I don't want to read the slides verbatim, I just kind of want to pause here. And if there's any questions folks have about either accomplishments or you're ahead, happy to entertain those.
First of all, it's nice to me, I mean, I've met a couple of you and it's nice that you're all here. Good to see some faces with names. I leave the trucks whenever they go by my place in commercial, I don't have, you know, these other working on my truck. So thank you. So my, a couple of questions I have kind of over all of this is the metrics, these are, they're all positive, right? You're talking about accomplishments. And this isn't the place maybe to put up challenges, but I'm curious, is this, I think you had alluded to this, one of the first times you've had really kind of got sunk your teeth into it as the, as the city administrator, public works director. And now, now going forward, we can back, we can measure these going forward. Because I don't know what, you know, is securing 40 bare resistant totes? Did we do, you know, 100 last year or this is 40, are we going down or up? I guess the point is like sort of going forward or progressing, right? And when there are challenges, like you said, it's not perfect. And so just explain those challenges, like, oh yeah, this is, this is why we went down to this one and this explains it. And so is this kind of a good jumping off point, you're setting your team up for future? That this is, because I've been for the other ones in the past, this is our first annual.
Yeah, no, 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 great question. And we do have kind of the metrics are kind of milestone, we call them milestones. And those are published internally, I didn't put them in the annual report or the strategic plan that's in the document. So each objective has a series of measurable milestones throughout the year. So that's how we kind of gauge progress, that's kind of like, it basically spells out like what has done look like in terms of achieving these objectives. Is that what you're kind of getting at?
Yeah, yeah, I imagine you do internally and I guess I'm just trying to establish, because I'm mostly positive stuff, right? You're presenting positive, of course it's positive, but there's, like you said, there's some things in there that may be in that, I don't want to get granular, but just, just seeing some of those challenges and working on those challenges or this is what we're going to, you know, I think you've got some things, goals for next year, but based on, these goals are our goals because we failed here.
Right, right. And a lot of those too, like there's still a work in progress, like progress, for example, like the preventive maintenance programs for catch basin cleaning and, and routine sewer shedding. To be, to be honest, Rick is going to develop that plan, but we've never had a backer truck before. So we don't know if it's going to be, hey, okay, we could, we could clean the entire sewer system in two years or based on existing workload, it's going to be kind of trial and error as we go. So, yeah, right now, like our goals, like last year's goals, for example, we're just identified roadblocks. Like what are the limiting factors for preventive maintenance programs? So we worked through some of those, then we got rid of the legacy street sweeping waste file, the cemetery. And now we have a dumpster where street sweeping waste goes to and our backer waste will be able to follow away. So kind of the next goal of 2024 is to develop the actual plan. And as Rick develops the plan, for example, he will set goals and metrics for his division.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so still it work in progress.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thank you. Safety first. Were there any injuries last, last year?
Oh, yes, I don't know how many.
So our own staff injuries? We have some minor.
Doing some safety.
We have some minor ones, we don't talk about those publicly because they are medical in nature.
Well, I mean, somebody's getting an industrial areas and it's like, we've had zero days that are injured, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had any, I think, that will probably from any of your normal work or project work. We have things like somebody tweaked their back bending or somebody slipped off of a step or something of that nature.
We didn't, we didn't want it serious. Bicep rupture.
Yeah, I don't want to put, I don't want to put you in the spot, but I'm curious, from you guys, at this same point of safety, are you guys comfortable with, with the procedures and everything, policies you guys have in place right now for the safety of your staff? It feels good?
Yeah, and we're working on, we're continuing to further the safety program also. We work on that, it's a continuous work.
It's always like top line.
Yeah.
We have a monthly meeting, safety meeting, Tom and I are in the chair. We're both there as management and then we have one person from each division that comes. So we talk about safety, we look at issues, we look at claims, how to mitigate those claims in the future, those kinds of things.
That's nice to hear, because I'm hearing you all your, once a year, the same report, then like safety doesn't, I just want to, my own personal the stuff I ask, or my personal interest of this, the community and the race safe, I guess. That's nice to hear, that's great.
Tom?
Oh, Councilor Waters?
My questions are like usual with tabs on them, but I don't know that it's, it's easier if I just ask the questions. Okay, I wondered if there, is there a pool champion?
So operations for the pools handle other regular division. And again, the path forward there is, is to get away from the, like the daily pool checks in the utilities division. Because again, we want to implement these prevent or maintenance programs. So it's my understanding that it's a work in progress, but you know, Kelly is the pool manager, is the champion.
Okay.
Or the driver of that. But we're, I mean, anything major pump related, Rick's crew is the one to repair the pool.
Okay.
And our maintenance.
And before I go to the next one, I want to recognize Ara for the walking program and that he switched doing a cleanup that, after we walked. And that was really important to our hearts, that somebody cared. Okay. I, on page five of 12, for Andy, how do you develop a 100-year capital?
More than anything, the goal there is that we're going to look at all of our assets across all of our divisions and look at the useful or design life of all of those. And then look at, you know, say for example, a bottom unit is a 50-year design life. We'll know that, you know, in 50 and 100 years, we need to replace that section of the main. So it's really, I mean, it'll, it'll be like for palm, it's, we're just starting, but it's going to be a large undertaking. But that's ultimately how we're going to do it, is asset by asset with the useful life. And then know the age of that structure currently, so we know when the first replacement needs to take place. And then we can get it on a replacement cycle, just, you know, kind of like we do with our vehicles.
That makes sense.
And then also play into the long-term budget planning too. So we know, we look to get, like, for example, if this plan is completed, we know like, hey, let's watch our debt service because, you know, in 10 years, for some reason, we have all these pump replacements aligned. So we're going to have a lot more operational costs in that year, so maybe we stagger capital projects. So it'll just help us in planning and being proactive.
Okay, that makes fun, I mean, that makes sense. On page six of 12.
I could, I could walk through, do you walk through each division or do you, you want to go ahead? I'm, I'm open to reader.
Well, it works best for me.
Okay.
We can try the other way.
Is there, is there any other questions for Public Works Admin when you go to the next division?
I have to find Public Works Admin.
Councilor Waters, are you going to annual report?
Yeah, she's in.
Is it okay if we save those for a little time at the end?
Yeah, sure, sure, yeah.
I'll go to the next division. So this is our capital improvement program slash engineering. So again, the accomplishments and work plan highlights are listed there. I just want to reemphasize the 4.5 million in grants, the low interest loans acquired. And going back to Andy's workload, we just got notification made, the Public Works for us, they have 150 million available. And that's, and that's projected to be sustained for at least four or five years. So there's an opportunity at least in the medium term for more, more funding. I'll happily go to the next division for any other questions. Okay, Water Division? And Councilor Waters, I know you mentioned that the security fencing, that is a fairly project for us.
It's not done yet.
It's not done yet, no, we're, we're starting, we're, we're still on permitting as a short line implications.
And in your April budget amendment, I'm moving money around to support that project.
Pardon me?
I'm moving money around to support that project.
And also too, in other, in other news, I, I overestimated the amount of unaccounted for water meters. Right, what are we, what are we down to just, it's just a handful, right? Two, three, I don't know, correct, we probably got.
Right now, we probably have 10, but yeah, we have three, we have a few major work on to replace. And we had somebody from Camstrup HD Power come to us and actually show us the way that we had equipment, but we didn't know we could go out and actually thrive around blocks in town and then we picked up a meter that we didn't have online yet. We found, we have recently found six meters out there that were now being installed that hadn't been activated, sending information signal.
But yeah, the meters are likely carried or. I thought there was more, like 20, but now it's far less, so.
Okay.
Where is the, where is the well site and backwash pond?
Chris, you have, can I take that one?
No, the well site is right there in the middle. It's where the, the tube is down, back at the bridge.
Just keep going.
Yeah, I never knew that.
The backwash pond is out there.
Okay, thanks.
Now that's, John, a great point, yeah, there's, especially with the newer council members, facility tour.
Yeah, I'd like to.
Okay, we still have a couple of minutes left. Hey, Wastewater Division? I will say too that Antonio and his team are still optimizing the plant from a foster survival standpoint. So yeah, every day, the plant is, is definitely more optimized.
I was going to ask, maybe Anthony or Tom, you were doing a, you're having a study on capacity for the wastewater treatment plant. Where is that, is that finished or is it getting close to it or?
I'm, I'm happy to take that one, so Gray Osborn, our last update, we are expecting a report this week, said by the end of the month. In terms of, I, in terms of what I have seen preliminarily anyway, is again, not to go too far afield, but ecology closely manages and evaluates our capacity at our wastewater treatment plant based on what our design capacity is. And so if we trigger 85% capacity at Andy's design criteria for three consecutive months, the Department of Ecology will force our hand to begin planning for upgrades. And based on the data that Gray Osborn provided, we go last fall, we hit 85% for BOD, not in three consecutive months, but just, there's a peak in August and then there's a peak in December due to our transient population nature.
Okay.
But keep in mind, we're already taking a proactive step, we have a general sewer plant funded at 50% from the Department of Ecology. Can't believe that April 9th council meeting will have that grant agreement before you for approval. And the scope of that project is doing a full-on wastewater treatment plant plan. As to what are the next steps that we're going to be detailing about increased capacity of the plant.
Okay.
As well as evaluating. Okay, and also wastewater?
Just for clarification, over 22, there was a 30% increase in biosolids?
So that was 2023, actually.
I mean, but over 22.
No, that was. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, thank you. And that was largely due to Antonio and his team having to increase wasting to bring the, what's called the MLSS, mixed liquor suspended solids concentration down to optimize the bio P. And that's also an indicator of how busy it was last year. Visitorship was stopped.
Yeah, okay.
So that means more sewage to treat. Hey, Streets Utilities Division? Yeah, excited to announce that we, we are going to receive our backer here next month. So that's our new sewer cleaning truck. I jumped ahead, catch basin one. Just for comparison sake, 2022, we had 21 weeks, so 2023, we had eight, but it fluctuates, it just depends on weather conditions. Facility Maintenance Division? They touched on it earlier, Ara and his team installed over a mile of heat tapes throughout our facilities.
I was going to ask, where is this heat tape installed?
I prefer the Ara, that one, yeah, they were, we did a good majority here. These all replaced. And especially after getting the new roof on there, that's pretty important to get those.
Yeah.
Trying to preserve what we have. And then we went down to Fest Hall and that Fest Hall was a good building. So that was a big number on heat foot that Jim showed down there.
Okay.
But I don't, I don't know if anyone had noticed down there, that, that building gets a lot of ice filled up. Gets a lot of ice, so that was in the heat as well, sure. And then we also went down to wastewater, yeah, and we could see what that, to be.
Is that typical for you guys, install that every year or is that just a one-time?
No, no. The old ones, for example, that were here and. The old ones, for example, that were here and that's all, I mean, they, they've probably been up for eight years.
Oh, okay. All right. It's a lot of, that's a lot of heat tape.
Yeah.
Wow, it's impressive.
We hope, I'm hoping we get many years, so.
Yeah, many years.
Okay. Last and certainly on base parks division.
Let's see, a big item on twenty twenty-four, that necessarily, but you get all this playground. So actually I've been with some. Pretty hard life pass.
You guys have to hire temps for that, that install? Cause it seemed like they're gonna drop off the crates and here you go, we're installing it or. Is the manufacturer installing?
Yeah, the contractor.
Oh, they're gonna do, okay.
Hey, and then now that's, what's left is just the general, general questions out, Councilor Waters here.
Oh, okay.
Your time then.
I'll try to be fast. Um, on page six of twelve, is it, do you guys have that too or?
It's the annual report, not what they want. I have a copy here.
Okay, um, objective four point three, conter- continue with internal public works department newsletter. Um, remember the, um, one of the public works, the lady that was here as a sub? She put out a public works newsletter that came to, I don't know if it went to the community or it just came to the council.
Yep, so we, yeah, we, we've done monthly newsletters since twenty twenty-two. At least on May before then, and they're, we just keep them internally. We were doing it monthly, however, they're becoming somewhat redundant. So in twenty twenty. Four, we're going to quarterly, and they're just internal.
Okay, okay, cause they were, um. It kept the, it kept us up, up to date with what was going on. So it was kind of fun.
And, and that's my intent with, with my monthly updates to the council, that those monthly newsletters are the reports that I provide. And frankly, I take a lot of that information from the internal newsletter that everyone puts together. So it's a team effort.
Okay, and objective four point four, continue to have staff and supervisors present. At city council meetings and community engagement nights. I love that one. I think it's really important that we see everybody.
Yeah, this is, this is fulfilling that objective. Not that we're, we're not trying to check box.
Under administration on that same page, six of twelve. Um, with that, you know, the first one, the two hundred and sixty-three square yards of asphalt, blah, 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 down kind of a, a little row there. Um. I'm trying to remember, are we letting the public know that like in some kind of a, I guess we don't have a newsletter anymore. But people gripe about the city never patching anything and, um, they're patching it all the time. And so it seems like sometimes it's nice to be able to see that or hear that. So those that are believing those that say. City isn't doing anything can go.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Yeah, and that was, that was the intent here as well, the annual reports, try and pull together, it's like five of numbers as we do some. Uh, and we certainly get evaluated, you can give that more frequently than an annual report as well. That's good feedback.
Okay, um.
A quick question of that.
Okay, go ahead.
Asphalt patches. There's a big asphalt patch on between front on like eight by the, out of the alley. Over pavers, like it's half, are we gonna put pavers back in there or is it just gonna be like a big black patch?
Yeah.
No, I'm just curious, like, is that it? Or?
Yeah, on Main Street.
Yeah, nine, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, that, we had one contractor who came in and did the excavation work. Now that is actually being lined tonight. That section is still there and then that contractor, um, should be repaired that this week.
Okay, I was just curious.
Be on final, final timeline on prepare. But yes, that'll be back as.
Yeah, as we, as we look forward in the next few years of redoing Front Street, hopefully we don't, we don't. Say, ah, well, we're gonna redo this anyways, let's kind of patch it. It's, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I thought, okay. Thank you, okay. Starship, go ahead.
Okay, on page eight of twelve, um, where you have like Mark Babiar had, you know, and, um. Ben and, uh, Chris, um, having some, uh. Trainings that they've been certified for something more. Are there, once they're certified with something more, are their positions open for that? Or will we lose them?
Good question. No, that's a, that's a great question. So in water and wastewater, we have what's called a senior. Water treatment plant operator or a senior wastewater treatment plant operator. So there's an incentive to gain more certifications.
Okay.
So if, uh, you have a non-supervisor, that's a, that's an operator, whether it's water or wastewater, if they. Give a group two in wastewater or a level two in water, they, they move into a senior role, there's a paid incentive associated with that.
Okay. On your, uh, on page ten of twelve, under administration, including C I P. Down a few, it looks like maybe down nine dots, hire engineering technician to support department.
Yeah, that, that goes back to what I was just sharing a, a little while ago about Andy's workload and how she has. You know, fourteen million dollars for the projects, just in a, a project engineer type role, but in addition to all the policy work that she. That she has to work on in addition to planning long-term. So that role will support, it will work. The plan is that would be Andy's employee and Andy will use. The, that resource to alleviate some of her workload and carry on forward, you know, some of the G I S, G P S. A, a, a gap that we have is private development inspections. Um, like some of the smaller ones that we, we have difficulty holding. Private developers, large or small, I would say primarily the smaller ones accountable to our road standards. Just because we lack the whole resources to have that oversight.
Okay. I'm getting close, you guys. Uh, on page eleven to twelve. Um. Under city public works department, twenty twenty-three annual report down to, um. In the first section of dots, down the, to the second one from the bottom, install security, okay. Um, security fencing at well site and backwash pond. And we talked just a little bit about it now, but that's not done.
It's not done. No, it's still, it's still on permitting. Cause, cause also please note that, that those two, well, at least the, excuse me, the, the, um. Water treatment plant is located outside city limits, so we have to permit that through Schlain County. Takes a little bit of effort.
Is that strange that it's out of the city limits or not?
Hmm, it's not strange in the sense that that's just where our source is and elevation wise, we need the plant.
Okay. Okay, um, on the next page, twelve of twelve. Um, pool exterior paint. Are we gonna get the pool painted on the outside?
I'll defer to Ari on that one. Sorry, which, the pool exterior paint. Only exterior, yeah, that's actually next on our list.
What color?
Yeah. We do a wave pattern on that.
Oh, that was, oh, that was so cool. Everybody loves that, the pool, since you guys painted the waves and everything, not everybody that. Comes in, comments on it.
And that was, uh, that was thanks to Parks Department as well, Tom, Tom and Larry.
That's just fun.
Yeah.
Uh, which the pool should be, is fun.
So the exterior, um, honestly, we were planning on just matching the color unless, uh.
You would have been better off just skipping that. You know what we call that color? Puce.
Also, yeah, we'd be mindful, we're done review board too, so we don't want to alter the exterior in much without seeing it available from the side of the view.
Thank you. Okay, that was my last question. Thank you guys for withstanding.
Okay, but this is, we still have, uh, still a minute.
Tom, you were gonna maybe refer if you had time to those nine folks that got some new certification?
Yeah.
That'd be nice to hear about that.
Yeah, sure. So yeah, in twenty, this is twenty twenty-three, so Mark Babiar obtained his water treatment plant. Operator group one, Ben Morrison has water treatment plant operator two, O I T, that's operator train. Also Ben has water distribution manager two, operator train. Chris Clankie obtained his water treatment plant operator two. Austin Smith at wastewater obtained his wastewater treatment plant operator one. Jason O'Brien obtained his A F O, that's aquatic facility operator. Jamie High acquired his aqua, aqua, excuse me, aquatic facility operator. John Shaw's got a certified plane arm inspector and I, I obtained my W B M two license, water distribution manager two.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Pretty impressive.
Is the aquatic one, the one that, um. It's a two-day thing and you go to Spokane or something like that and.
I think I went to most slate, I, I believe it's a two-day class.
Yeah, and then you're certified to, uh, do the pool stuff.
Very cool.
I have one final comment, which thank you for coming and I would like to see behind the scenes more so I can understand it. And, um, I wondered, you know, you don't come often and sit before the council. I wondered if any of you has anything you want us to know about in the spirit of. Communication transparency, we'd like to listen. Is there anything?
You can slip us like the kidnappers, like note on the.
Or anything more we can do for you or anything like that? Yeah. Okay. Set that up with you.
Yeah, like through Andrea, with a proper.
That'd be fun.
Yeah, I'd recommend that. That's quite a tour. I got it when I was first coming on and it's. It's real in-depth and it's really nile. Do you do that with the, I mean, I did that, I grew up in Iowa, I could go take a tour of the Waterworks Park. You guys do the, do the kids go through it all, up here?
House schools?
Yeah.
Middle school.
Yeah, you do good, yeah.
So did I, so I mean, why so?
Yeah, and they go to the water plant too.
And one of them, yeah.
I guess I'm just dumb enough to throw it out. I'll answer your question. If you need any help with your campus. You have any, you'll see that.
Yeah. Everything is so squished. Yeah.
You guys are making do with some very old facilities.
For sure.
She, she get a trailer office.
I think that's.
Great idea.
Well, again, thank you for coming and giving that, the update.
Yeah, thank you.
Playing the tarball, right?
I feel like he'd spend that on work.
He's good, you did. Can you imagine how good you could do with that?
Okay, next up is our communication survey results for your discussion.
Turn on the microphone.
Oh, we don't have to turn it on. I'm still glad.
Well, I think it's for the.
Oh, do you want to do them on the door?
Yeah.
Well, here's the, here's the rest of it, but I get it. I had some, I have had some, a few.
All right, so segue into communication. So great to be back here. Um, I am here to update you about mental communication survey. Um, this was done seven months ago, uh, following up from my last meeting in the Bronx to, uh, cover the newsletter. Um, in your packets, I'm not gonna go over all the survey results, um, but I do want to highlight we had over a hundred responses. We had some really interesting, we had some really interesting feedback, um. A lot of people are already subscribing to our weekly Sunday emails, which looks me very happy to hear. Um, they also refer to have their information. Given to them on a weekly basis with this feedback, um, and they are in general interested in pretty much hearing most everything that's happening in the city. Which is, which is great because we want everyone to feel very informed. Um, it was also really enlightening to see. How many people that we surveyed are actually following us on Facebook versus our actual Facebook followers. Cause we have quite a big, uh, in my mind, quite a very solid, uh, social media following on Facebook and Instagram. But, um, for those that took the survey weren't necessarily getting their information, so, yeah, so that was enlightening to me. Um, and also we did ask people if they've ever received the courier before, if anyone was about. And most people responded that no, they'd actually never received the courier. It was actually, it was over forty percent.
That surprised me. That one stuck out.
Right? So which is.
What does that mean?
Interesting, yeah, so.
Me saying that too because you literally mailed it to every address.
So.
Those are the ones that are in the garbage though.
Yeah, so, or they not getting it, maybe they just toss it, not realizing what it is. That to me was very interesting.
Yeah, it's significant. It's, yeah, typically, it's, yeah. Forty, forty percent?
Over forty percent, yes. So, but I mean, and then less than forty percent said, yeah, some people didn't know and some people were maybe, but, but.
Yeah.
No was the more common answer, it was interesting to me. So, um, overall, I did want to note that I did forget to. I apologize, did forget to include some others for one of the questions and I do have those responses available. It's basically, it was the question, what is your preferred method for receiving updates? Select all that apply and some people had added some additional notes. Um, they wanted letters from their echo, they liked the listener emails, emails. I do not do social media, the more the better, a direct email. So those comments were included and I can, you can have a copy of those if you'd like. Um, also I felt that we had a really good showing of age group, um, so our target market is pretty much forty to sixty-four, that's our highest. Age group that took the survey. On average, uh, even on social media, our, uh, our highest demographic is women. About seventy percent women and the ages ranging from thirty to forty-four. So it was also interesting to see that sort of age category, people who participated in the survey. Was, uh, above that group, but. Uh, I think that is really great. I can talk about that all night, but I'm not going to. So. Now that you have the survey, also included in the packet, I included a couple of other things that, uh, our communication methods. So you'll see the postcard mailer that went out for the recent street closure, how to use their A D O life, the similar work. Um, also we did some five-carded private updates for Glacier and the Front Street. So these are something that we are hoping to do more of in lieu of a typical mailing newsletter. So we're hoping to do more targeted communications and more project-specific communication. So I wanted you to see what has been going out. And then I also wanted to give a note, um, I do have to give, um, a quote to our paper record, Level One Echo. So, um, over the past few months, they have done a pretty stellar job of canvassing the city council meetings, of being here and also just. Giving that to, back to the public. So I did make some copies if you're interested and kind of flag some of their most recent city council. Confics, cause I thought that was really nice to show, um, sort of our local newspaper that was in the city council. So I will leave these here for your leisure. I only have one, so you don't have to go to Chango for, for that for a half week. Um, but today I really only have one question with the council. In your opinions, do you feel that the Level One Courier is a city council news site?
No.
No.
No, cause we've never provided content before.
So, yeah, no?
There was a time when we, when we did add some content.
We, we discussed it and kind of helped with modifying what was already being drafted, but it's never come straight from the council.
Okay.
Actually.
No, it did.
It did.
It did.
Not in the last four years.
Right, before.
Uh, from individuals, it did, cause I poked something in. Was a thank you to the walkers probably five years ago.
Did, do, do, why do you ask that question?
I asked that question because the last courier that went out was actually just around the spring, the spring twenty twenty. And so you'll notice that the information is in there, it's very similar to the information we include in our weekly Sunday feedbacks, which we send out. Every Sunday and it's more updated information. And so. And the courier, because of the way that we receive the community feedback and because. I think there's just been a historical change from when the news, from the, when the courier started. I, I have an amazing binder of literally every copy of every, every newsletter that's gone out. So and this how it's worked over the years. And so I think today with social media, with our weekly sending emails. With how people are wanting their information, when they're wanting their information, I feel that, um, perhaps. A courier newsletter from the city council is leading up the best platform, whose I am still a Facebook fan and I'm keeping the courier newsletter, but perhaps. Not calling it, uh, from the city council, but still include the city council, but we have it more of a forward thinking. not coming in uh from the city council, but still include the city council, but we have it more of a forward thinking, more over higher archy, looking forward sort of avenue versus trying to capture things that have already happened. Or, you know, we're behind a ball or something like that. Um, so I have some ideas that I've been kind of spinning around in my head, but um I just want to know, I don't want to take something, I don't want the city council to feel like you don't have a newsletter anymore, if you feel that that was something that you could have wanted to keep as a city council newsletter. So.
Well, I, I've worked in communications a lot for years and the landscape has changed a lot, you know, from television through everything, it's changed a lot. Um, my concern, I guess, would be, you know, I don't know, I don't know how to answer all these questions. I agree with you about the echo. That's been great. My concern would be if you change content and it's more forward looking, I really think that then, then that should be nailed back to our thinking about looking forward. You know, if, if, if you report on sort of what's happening, that's one thing, but if you're generating content about what's going to happen in the future, then I think that needs to be really, we need to be really engaged in that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and so that's the question. So if we continue to have the eleven one courier as the city council newsletter, then the expectation would be that the content in the newsletter would be thought of as a council. Whereas perhaps if we modify the content and we have it be more of a a staff driven newsletter depending on what's happening, the ongoing of the city, and then maybe have a section where we feature a council member every month and we have something from you or talk about uh what your priorities are or something like that. There's, there's things that we can do. I just don't, I'm just, today I want to know, does the city council feel that the eleven one courier is a city council newsletter? If yes, then that's great and we can grow with those expectations. No, then that's okay. And then we can figure out the best use of the courier we need to forward, whether it's a hybrid, whether that's, that can be future, I mean, you just come back.
Send out quarterly, right?
It's quarterly right now.
So how many city council meetings are filled in each quarter that people can attend physically or go online and hear the voice of the city council? That's the question, right?
Eight, eight, right?
Eight meetings. Eight meetings. So you're talking about, to your point, you know, you watch the evening news and I've seen it since the morning on TikTok news. I mean, like it just, it's, it's late. The nightly news is late. So to that point, we have eight city council meetings for each one of these letters, looking forward, they can hear our voice, they can attend, they can email us, they can reach out to us. I guess if they, you know, they get a really good idea of what we're about, even individually. Um, but it has to add value if we're going to do a quarterly. I'm not sure that the city council would add value to this, whatever, basically you're providing for the city and all the things that people do, they do want to get the newsletter, they do want to hear about it. But I'm not, you know, it's, they said all encompassing. So I, I think that if we're missing from that, it's not going to be detrimental to.
Problem is, again, with the mailer too, it's just it takes a lot more time to produce. You can send out, so that even makes it later. So even if you're trying to kind of, when you submit, it's on top of it by the time it gets out there, it's it's going to be delayed. So it's just, I think, you know, I think what you were trying to say, um, Karen, is just that if it's forward enough thinking, it's not necessarily visioning, I don't think, but just looking further out ahead to upcoming things versus trying to get immediacy to it would be the, the, the way to, that you could then, it's not as critical about when it comes out, if you're talking about next year or projects down the line or whatever. But, or bringing up just general things that are always in place, but just reminders of whatever. But, yeah, it's just, it's a hard, it's a hard beast to try to say to her.
You know, I've been involved in generating newsletters too. And I mean, I'm going to offer a couple of ideas. One is that I think it's a good idea to feature individual uh council members and their thoughts or however you want to do it because um, a lot of people don't come to our meetings, you know, and they don't always catch us in the produce section at dance. And, and so transparency is really important. So to allow that, that barrier to come down a bit, have a little more exchange, I think is a good idea. Um, secondly, think about doing it twice a year instead of four times. And the reason I say that is I just know what it's like to try to generate a thing like that, you know? And then like, did I get the content right? And didn't you say forty percent of the people said they didn't even know if they ever, or they didn't ever get one? I mean, so, I mean, I think that's telling us something right there. So I, I'm going to suggest maybe you do it twice a year though.
So the council feel comfortable saying that the courier, the eleven one courier is no longer a city council newsletter, but allows staff to maybe go back to the drawing board and figure the best way to release it, and that brings the most value to the community.
I would say that, um, Karen, I also say that I'm not sure we would have dropped twice a year because that's, what do you put in, something you put out twice a year, right? I think a little more up to date, if we can do it, four times a year would be a good thing. And I was thinking that maybe we think highlighting a council member or whatever, I think that's a good move. Uh, just kind of get to know this person. Um, and also I think issues that are sort of out there, like sharing sort of hit on that where people don't know what the public works has done, like how many square, you know? Some of those numbers are very impressive and they haven't got a clue. They just don't think things get fixed because the streets are, you know, what, you know? But they need to have that information. That'd be some good information to put in that, that courier. Um, and um you know, pull out of this report for one thing. And then there's the issues like, uh, like, like say the recycle thing of with a brush and that. We don't have an answer for that yet, but a lot of people, they're not aware that, how that, how that actually works and not that that has to be a topic, but I think things like that could be addressed um and clarified, like the residents really don't. This is for residents only and it's not paid by the residents, it's paid by this, by the business part. Um, but so that there's, I don't know, I think that there's some clarification, that, that the council has to make some decisions on that also, what we're doing, but that's a point that's kind of a mystery for folks, but they get frustrated over it because they can't bring their, you know, bring their brush there. So if, and uh, so that's why I think four times a year and picking some topics that seem to be out there and, and clarified, maybe we could clarify them. So that'd be my, my take.
When, when you go to print or before you go to print, do you bring the council content and say, hey, content is going to include X, Y, and Z?
So, you know what? I have not had the opportunity to do eleven one courier.
Is that, oh, okay.
Yeah, which is, which is why it was on my list and then that's where, that's how this whole conversation started. It had, it hadn't been going out regularly, so that's where coming on, having new communications and special products manager, I said, I was still doing this, or not, is it from the city council? If it's from the city council, then that's great. Let's get the city council content. And then that basically was started this whole conversation. So I, what I would love to do, I think if you're all on board with no longer calling the eleven one courier, city council newsletter, I would love to go back to the drawing board. One of my tasks is actually creating uh overall communications plan, and I would love to come with some ideas and another study session, maybe in case you guys what I'm thinking, because I think I would still love to have some input if whatever this newsletter is going to be, I would spend, or if we do regular campaigns that are not newsletter related, I would love to have some more interaction with city council members. So I think you're open to it. Let me go back to the drawing board, come up with some options, maybe some ideas, take back your feedback and figure out the best course forward and then you can put something. Does that sound?
Sounds good.
Yeah.
I would only a- ask that because I feel like I'm not, this is a good avenue for people who aren't on social media and don't have a phone. Um, and it's important for them to get information. Um, but I think from this study, I would ask that you just in the next year evaluate the effectiveness of it. And if people are even getting it, I think it's, this is kind of my opening to really kind of look at when you start doing a regular one for this year, let's look next year and figure out was it, did it make an impact? Was it valuable? There are people who, you know, I think we need to keep in mind, because I'm not sure, I'm not sure this is the best way. It, in twenty five years, people are going to be like, oh, are we still printing on paper? Why didn't it down? Why didn't it down, right? He gets the L P's.
At your childhood, it sounds great. So, yeah.
See that.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions that I can kind of put back into my brain and then?
Well, I think Z's idea is really important that we are back to the produce section at dance. They catch us there too. And so we are hearing about what people are thinking about. So just to be, that to be part of the process would be great. Doesn't mean it's our newsletter, but you know, we can help.
Everybody that catches me at dance lives outside of eleven. Did you know, they talk to me like, where do you live? Oh, no, I'm on my icicle. Oh.
I think it would be helpful for us to get feedback from staff on how this can be an efficient process because historically it has taken, like the mayor has said, a really long time from draft to actually getting it in the mail because there, it's so process heavy. Um, so I don't want us to be a roadblock if this is transitioning, you know, strictly into staff redesigning and implementing. I don't want a whole bunch of process to be impacting how we get this out the door because there can be some really great quarterly information that can go, goes out to the community this way. Um, I mean, maybe aligning it quarterly with our community engagement nights that are quarterly, you know, getting out ahead of those things to make sure people know what's, what's coming up there, quarterly projects coming out of, of the, of the city, you know, public works projects, quarterly, those sorts of things. I know that I get a lot of questions in the spring from neighbors and friends of when's your spring cleanup coming? When do I get to leave my bags out in the yard? And the announcement of that has not been on a regular schedule. Sometimes it feels like it's coming to us like a week before it's even starting. So people don't don't even have the opportunity to go buy those bags and get ready. So kind of getting out ahead of those types of quarterly things in a little bit more strategic manner, I think would be really helpful. Um, yeah, those sorts of things. And um, I would love the option of not getting the paper and maybe getting it emailed to me instead. And if there's a way, long term, if we can sign up to be an email recipient versus a paper recipient, I think that that program could be really beneficial to the people who just don't want more mail. But do want to see what's coming out.
And we've talked about even just having it be an opt-in to get them the mailed version because it seems like, again, more and more it's the other way and why spend the money?
Yeah, I think there's savings to the, the city too. If you're just going to throw it away in the recycle bin or something like that, let's not mail it out, you know?
I'm not sure on publications though, if it's a real savings or not. I mean, at the end of the day, it's you, the bulk post, I mean, it's.
It's still, no, it's still a savings.
Okay.
If you only have to do.
Each quarterly newsletter ranges between three and five thousand dollars in print only, printed and posted.
And how many are we printing?
So prior to twenty twenty, we were consistent with our quarterlies every year.
But I'm saying, if you print twenty, if you print two thousand, if you print three thousand, and you print two thousand, the price goes up. So the savings is, it gets minimalized, right?
Yeah.
So it's like you're saving a lot by having an email list and exempt.
So the courier went to a lot more than just city limits. We, we did the upper thousand. So if you lived at the chum stick, you got it. If you were at the icicle, you got it. I think we did about thirty five hundred.
Okay.
Was our number that got printed. And that left us with a few, um, about a hundred, two hundred or so that we kept upstairs. We put out on the counters, visitors picked up, things like that.
These are great ideas. These are great. So, and also I do want to just say, if there's ever a topic that you feel like needs to be addressed or you're getting a lot of in-person community, there's no limitation to talking to the mayor and doing other stuff. I mean, like, hey, do you mind if I should, can we go to where the annual weekly Sunday for the next two weeks? So like yard base is like the perfect example because we got so tall, because the chipping program, we just put out last week, the chipping programs are starting and we put the ice cream yard, it was after, after the chipping. So we don't have that date down, down, but we're saying, hey, everybody chip. So, but that's like a perfect example of planning ahead.
Are we, can we, can we, I figured out the answer to this. Can we ask the community, especially because this goes out to where the pool taxes can we come from? Can we ask people to vote for initiatives? That would benefit the pool? Can we ask for them to build on certain things or is that a non-starter?
We, we are allowed to create the ballot measure.
Yeah.
Which is more nice. So it ends up public.
Yeah.
And in your packet, uh, we are allowed to provide facts. That's going to cost X, Y, and Z. We are not allowed to say, please vote.
Opinion, okay. We can provide facts. That'd be nice.
Any other questions? I know there's a few more items, so I want to make sure you guys all have some time.
You can say, we want, I want you to post.
So if I wrote, uh, in that courier, I could say.
You can say you want, no, you just, we can't do it from the city.
Can't do it through city.
From the city resource.
You can do it on your own.
Do it on your own, you can write a letter to the other.
On the street.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
It's as powerful as cities.
We won't get as you.
But everyone's on board with the new future.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In your hands.
All right. Excited. Thank you.
Are you going to rename it?
What was that?
Are you going to rename it?
Just run it through chat G P T and see what it's.
Trying to rename the weekly Sunday email, but.
To what?
Bavarian W and you know, like your weekly words or weekly, I think it's not understanding the wrong way. So if you have any suggestions, I'd love them.
Everything you wanted to know.
What?
Everything you wanted to know.
Everything I want to know. Thank you so much for your time.
And then.
Thanks, Karen.
Thanks, Karen.
Well, we'll be here, all right?
Right. And next up is flood regulations.
Well, good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, this is a very non-exciting topic. It has generated. It has generated no agency and no public comment. So very minimal discussions have been had on it. Um, the edits came from Department of Ecology as part of a periodic review of our flood regulations. And they're mostly required, um, changes or recommended, and then some recommended changes as well in the packet. The first five pages of the attached changes are all to the definition section of the code. And from there, um, there isn't a whole lot to, to really dive into unless you have an interest in it. Um, one of the changes, you know, that's unique is that we're defining and using accessory structure uh in a different way. So part of the reason why this isn't a big popular item is we have so little flood area in the city. And they are remapping the state and they've been working on that process for, I think, eight years. Um, the full five years I've been here, we've been expecting every year that they complete the process. So they are getting closer. I'm not expecting any enlargement of our flood regulation areas um along the shoreline. And we have virtually no structures in the flood right, flood regulation areas right now. So this code is not used often. Um, we did review it and use it with the um garden house addition. Um, so those type of projects that are really close to the water. Um, but like I say, we don't have a whole lot of them in the city limits and most of our shoreline is parkland. So I'm hopeful that you guys feel comfortable with Department of Ecology's recommendations and uh, staff didn't take all of their recommendations, but we, we did sort through and, and pull out the ones that we thought were uh, relevant to development in Leavenworth. The majority of them were forwarded on through this process. So with that, maybe I'll turn it back to you to see if anyone has any questions.
Questions? Well, is that the um, report that you and I went through early on when I was after, you know, we went through the whole thing. I think you were on the phone and I was on the phone and we probably met five times on the phone. Is that the?
Oh, I thought, I thought you were talking about the shoreline master program we adopted a couple of years ago and you and I sat down and walked through it chapter by chapter. Yeah. No, these are different regulations in addition to the shoreline regulations.
Okay.
Yeah, specifically related to flood. So.
Uh, I had a question, just in the definition, which is pretty, I think, pretty simple to explain. Well, on accessory structure says needs a structure on the same parcel of, that's the very first definition we're talking about, one of nineteen. Um, use a structure on the same parcel of property as a principal structure and the use of which is incidental to the use of the principal structure. So what is that? Um, incidental to the use of the principal structure? What's, what does that mean?
It, it generally just means secondary. Um, historically, the city has regulated. the city has regulated the size of the accessory structures like an accessory dwelling unit. We've minimized the size of them uh, so that it was most often going to be smaller than the primary ho- home. So that makes it incidental and secondary to the principal use. Um, it, and then this, yeah, in this case, it could be a shed too, right? So it's gonna be secondary use.
All right. Just checking it out. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
If some, if something comes up now and before the hearing, I prefer to have the questions before the hearing. So yeah, feel free to reach out to me directly if that's the case. And thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paul.
All right. And then you've also got a list of future study session items. And again, we've added some from the past at your suggestion. If you've got others that want to see put on there, you can let us know and then we'll time for a break.
Well, do we have an idea where some of the suggestions we came up with, where they're at in line and discussed? Like I brought up an issue on designating certain holidays on times for construction, which we didn't want them to be started during the morning. Do we have an idea where we are with that? Those items that have been brought up, when they might show up?
In the next um, packet, we'll have the draft agenda that we use to do all of that. And you'll be able to see where all the things are in line.
Are scheduled.
Okay, that's gonna come in the next, next.
Yeah.
City council.
We'll work with that at the beginning of each quarter.
Okay.
Yeah, we we include that every quarter. So you can see what's projected out, where they've been slotted in.
Okay, great.
All right. We've got time for a little break, huh? And welcome.
Yeah. We're just.
Kind of read that email.
All right, and you're all ready.
Yeah.
Call to order the meeting of March twenty-sixth for Leavenworth City Council. Please stand for a minute. Steve?
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call.
Sharon Waters.
Anne Hesper.
Zeke Reister.
Shane there.
Rhonda Baron.
Travis McMaster.
And I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Strand.
Uh-huh.
Second.
All those in favor, let me see your hands. Pass it unanimously. We'll move on to consent agenda. And Sharon, you got a couple of questions?
I have three questions. On the accounts payable, excuse me, page two, the third item down, H R consulting, February twenty-fourth. What was that?
Without pulling that specific invoice, uh, so Cabot Dow is the H R firm that we have hired and they help us with a variety of things, including looking at our job descriptions, updating our job descriptions, performance evaluations. Uh, they're also sustained with a little bit of insight with union negotiations for selling.
Okay, so this is a
this is part of a contract we've had with Cabot Dow. It's a two-year contract that was approved by the council um, last year. It's a two-year contract. Um, and it's ticked up a little bit because they're starting on the compensation study.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my next question is on page four, bid for Front Street Park restroom. Daily Journal of Commerce. Is that just someplace where we put that?
Correct. All of our major projects typically go through the daily meter of commerce, which is where contractors go to look for projects to bid for.
Okay, thanks. And on the next page, page five, lodging tax repairs and maintenance, update farmers markets sign at Lions Club Park.
So I believe, uh, Sue Reagan was working on this particular project and we have the signs that hang out here at Lions Club Park. And she did an update to the farmer's market sign.
Taking it off or?
It's a hanging sign.
Yeah.
I don't know the specifics.
Isn't, aren't they gonna be?
They're gonna be over here.
They are gonna be over here.
On Saturday now, instead of Thursday.
Okay, but not downtown?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Is that it?
Think so. Let me see what that, yeah, it is. Thank you.
Take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So.
Second.
By a couple and second by Shane, but um, I'll say, uh, Annie.
Hey, Wendy.
You're not gonna win again.
Standing by Shane. All those in favor, let me see your hand. Passes unanimously. Comments from people in the public on items that aren't on our agenda. You better have something that they would like to speak to you. I don't see anybody on, is there somebody online?
We have three people, but nobody.
Raising, okay. We will move on then. We've got uh, presentation, public safety report. I did see Corporal Lake online there, so.
Welcome.
All this evening. So um, for March, we had a few last hours reported, uh, six hundred and two hours with twenty-two foot, um, foot patrol hours. Um, offenses um, and calls for service. There was a hundred and ten in the city limits. Um, sixteen citations and looks like five criminal arrests.
I have questions.
But.
Sure, sure. Um, where it says, um, V E B, dead body three, what was that?
Uh, three unattended people, uh, unattended deaths. In other words, um, they weren't at a medical facility.
Okay.
So we respond, make sure there's nothing suspicious, call the coroner um, and then the coroner releases the body for pickup.
Okay, so the unattached, unattended death, there were three, that's one in the same.
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, um, search warrant. What can you tell us about that? There was says one.
Yeah, that, I don't know specifically. My biggest guess from looking at the charges would be a possible blood draw search warrant for the DUIs.
Uh, would you say that again? Blood draws?
Yeah, the two, if somebody doesn't want to um, blow on the machine on the breathalyzer, then we write a search warrant, get that approved by a judge and then draw their blood.
Do you get that search warrant right away or?
Correct, the um, the judge loves loves it when we wake them up about two, three in the morning. But uh, no, there's an electronic search warrant. We can send it right to their iPads. They can review the probable cause and then grant the warrant. Um, or deny it, either one, but um, they're pretty much usually granted. Especially on the DUI warrants, they're, they're pretty, pretty much just fill in the blanks.
Okay, um, suspicious circumstances, seven.
Uh, that's just people calling in if there's a strange vehicle at somebody at at a neighbor's house. Or it's just kind of, sometimes can be a catch-all if the Rivercom doesn't use miscellaneous. So without um, having my actual work computer and being able to pull up individual calls and knowing the incident numbers, um, it's just a a category of a call.
Okay, uh, two other questions. Um, what does non-classified mean or not classified mean? Like there was. Go ahead.
Me.
Um, then what does not classified mean? Like up here that says assault not classified two.
Oh, uh, they probably just didn't put in if it was a assault first, second, third, or fourth, are the different degrees of assault.
You're right.
Okay. And my last question. What's the difference between a DUI and a driver twenty-one consuming?
The um, under twenty-one, so twenty and under, uh, is point oh two. Um, where the state for adults is point oh eight. Um, and they're actually discussing lowering that to point oh five. Once upon a time back when I started, it was point one. Um, but juveniles, so twenty and under, um, under the legal drinking age, if they have O two in their um, system.
A a minimum of O two, is that?
Mac, uh, yes, correct. I'm sorry, a minimum.
Okay. All right, thank you kindly.
Sure. Any other questions?
Questions? Randy, have a question in the how you see a hundred and ten um, different ar- arrests or citations. And then I see some two months to a hundred and sixty and these numbers hundreds at a time. How many, can we identify how many? And this may not be germane, but how many of these are citizens of Leavenworth versus visitors? Is that possible to fig to communicate that?
Um, I'll, I'll jot that down and ask. Um, and it was a hundred and ten uh, infractions or citations or um, criminal activity. It's a hundred and ten calls for service um, from the seven alarms or agency assists and animal problems, et cetera. Um, and that's just in the city limits on down. The arrests would be the uh, um, criminal traffic and the citations issued.
Right.
Which was twenty-four total.
I guess it doesn't need to get that granular, but.
That's a great question.
They're visiting it at Airbnb. It could still be a call to the city limits.
Right.
Maybe not a criminal thing, but it's a, it's a distress call and it's taking up resources. I'm just getting my head around it.
I kind of doubt there's a way to tell um, through our system if the if the violator is from in or in the county or out, um, on our um, criminal, on on our thorough reports, it does ask if somebody's for a resident of Shalan County. Um, and we mark yes or no. But just for all the calls and most things are just what we call a report and narrative. So it's not a super detailed report. Excuse me, and um, I don't know that there'd be a way to tell if the person generating the caller involved in the call is a county resident.
Okay.
I'm sorry if you said something that didn't come across.
No, okay, yeah, thank you. Yeah, if that's, if there's, you John had made some notes earlier, if there's any court, you see where I'm getting at, right? Just trying, trying to figure out kind of who's who doing some of these things. So um,
Okay.
You know.
So just you would just like to know on like criminal arrests, if they're local or not, or?
Yeah, we'll start with that. Yeah.
Okay.
That'd be cool.
Yeah, I I'll check. I I kind of doubt it.
Yeah. All right.
You doubt that you can give that information out or you can get the information?
I doubt, I I doubt the information is available to show um, on their, on these reports, like her monthly report that comes up.
Yeah.
I don't know that there's a way, but I will ask um, if there is there. It's possible because they'd be listed in a if if there's an actual arrest, especially a physical arrest, they would be um, filling out the um, what we call a NIBR's report. And that's the one that has that information if the suspect is um, a resident of Shalan County. It won't show if it's a somebody out in Leavenworth. It could be somebody that lives in Shalan that's out visiting in Leavenworth and still be considered a Shalan County resident. Um, but that would, I think, show up for actual physical arrests. A lot of other things, they don't get the NIBR's report for everything.
I was gonna ask you, Randy, they don't necessarily have show an ID, show the residence when they get taken? I mean, that is a part of the process.
Yeah, if they have ID on them, we check their ID. I just don't know if she can pull up on this type of a report. Um, and then a lot of arrests, they, the suspended and stuff where people aren't booked, we sometimes do the report and narrative that doesn't have all that info additional information in it. Like NIBR's report does, the NIBR's is triggered for a lot of things to include a physical arrest.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Randy.
Thanks, Randy.
Anything else?
I'll do it.
Alrighty, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mike's not here. You've got his report in your packet there, but he's not present. So I'm assuming he's out on the call. Um, now we got a presentation from Dick Coby and Lake Transit.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks for having me here tonight. I know you have a big agenda in Salvia, actually, so. If you're online, but I want to say before you started, I think thanks to the city level. You guys have been so great to work with. Lilith, Tom and Andy, we've done several projects now together and we look forward to it. So it's really, it's really fun to relate that. And this, as you know, is one of the projects that we put together pretty quickly and turned out, I think, this really well. It worked out great for our buses, great for your community, able to solve the problem, the O T S, so it's putting them all together. So, and appreciate all the great stuff you've done. So anyway, Lake Transit, this is Leavenworth City Council, I think, so we'll get right to it. So who are we? So I don't know if everybody really knows who Lake Transit is. So our first day of service was December sixteenth, nineteen ninety-one, so thirty-three years old. Uh, we have a thirteen member board, so two, two county commissioners from each side of Shalan, that's camping, one city councilman, all eight cities that we serve. Our service area, we have over thirty-six hundred square miles, all of Shalan County, about a third of that was county. We're the biggest service area in the state of Washington. We have a population that we serve about a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. They serve seven days a week. We travel two, one, four million miles a year. Roughly around around a hundred and eighty-eight employees and we keep a pretty good community partner. So this is Halloween on the Avenue of Nashy. And we do a haunted bus, so the kids go in through here and they're, they're all on, decorated, and about the other side. And these are just our employees, the ship, the duck, their mascot. And they, they just volunteer, they have to fucking scan, they, so it's really, it's really fun and they have a good time with it. And we do Fourth of July, I know, in Nashy, the Lot Island. And we do all coach, love. Some types of service, yeah, I think you're all pretty familiar with, uh, picture of, I forgot to ask, who rides Lake Transit?
Yeah.
Quite that, thank you. Uh, picture of is a big bus, throughout twenty-two, comes through here twenty-four times a day. Uh, the Dart is a general public dialer, it's only in two places, Leavenworth and Shalan. So that's, that's for everybody. Not everybody knows what the Dart is. I think it's a special beast. Bus, but it's actually, if anybody can call up, get the bus, they can take it anywhere you want to go on to Shalan, here, Leavenworth and or casually, you can do. Lake Bus is our special senior disabled service. Uh, TripLink is a new program we got, it's about two years old now. So if you live out of town and you can't, you don't provide service, but you're somewhere in the county, you can get your friend to take you to your doctor, bring you down here to the town, through shopping, uh, bring, or bring you to a post bus stop. We will reverse the mileage, so nobody's out of the mileage. So it kind of helps incentivize people to help their friends out. Rideshare is a manual program. So if you have three more people, you're going to some place that they don't provide service, that dwells them. Grandly down, uh, they have posts, just going to different places, you can clean seat, they'll, they'll take one of us twenty dams and they they pay a monthly stipend and it's all providing service. Okay, so this is our, so this is actually our operation base, the whole station. That's our major space, lots over here, pocket in that big green area, I'll talk about it in just a second. Um, so this is this built nineteen ninety-eight, got a bond for, it's finished in ninety. And actually in two thousand, right, this I six ninety-five did. And they moved in, laid off half our staff. Welcome home. Since then, we gave it. Uh, Columbia Station is downtown, that's our enrollment center. It connects with Amtrak, Northwest State Lines, Ranji Valley Shuttle, taxis. Get uh eleven parking rides to be operated. Five of the own, six others that we have at least a little bit. Our fleet, we have twenty-three battery electric BYD buses. BYD stands for Build Your Own Rooms. And we have nine more riding, twenty-four, but actually, I shouldn't say BYD. So BYD is a China-built company, China-made, it's a China-owned company. It's transitioning to an American-made company, so they can get federal funds to purchase a vehicle. And so now they changed their name to RY, all right. So that's what we have. It'll be the same basic vehicle, it's just uh a new US-owned company. Twelve Gillings and big buses that come through town, they're about twenty-two. They leave it, these are still have those diesels, like there's the range on the battery electric, so about hundred and thirty miles. And unless you have charging opportunities to charge the battery for the day, you can't make such these long-distance trips. The diesels are a twelve-year vehicle, about five hundred thousand miles, they're twenty-nineteens, so you've got a lot of life left with left with them. So instead of just trying to replace them, something better quite work, right? Trying to figure out so we can actually get electric buses up here um and work all the time, so these souls. We have twenty twenty-two cutaways, those are the kind of that audio chassis. Twenty-four pair of trans vans, all vehicles are ADA-equipped, ADA is ready. Direct disability. Thank you. And anything to say. So these are the inductive chargers we was talking about. So we have four, we have actually, we don't have five now, but three at Columbia Station. And they're just right here. The bus drives over, it lowers, it's on an eight-inch gap. And they charge. It's a three-hundred kilo watt charger. And if one minute of charging, we get about two miles. So about every route, especially in town, you can, we can have electric bus go about fourteen to sixteen hours, up two hundred and fifty-plus miles by coming in, all opportunity charging throughout the day. So it builds that charge backup, they come back in to about sixty percent roughly of state of charge. So that's really good. So then at night, we park into the slow charger and they have nineteen chargers for twenty-three vehicles, they can triple charge all of them, they rotate the ones out to up right, they'd be charged. Um, cost about five hundred thousand dollars a piece installed. We've gotten grants for all of them. We have one in Leavenworth, we're putting one. But one of the real uh investment, so picture of the first stop, we have different uh Leavenworth run it up. Welcome Village, we built in two thousand and nineteen. The night space, night space partner ride that I'm building these restaurants. Other restaurants on the backside. Glacier Parking Lot, we're partnering with the city Leavenworth, deal with the restroom. Thank you very much for that. And Long Bus Puzzles, deal with the two bus puzzles, to lay over towards the end of town. Tread, all part of Tread, Pathway Studies. They were a partner in that, a hundred thousand dollars. Confiscation, four hundred and sixty-two thousand for the EIS study. And uh, we actually eleven on corridor study, so that's something they were putting together. In the twenty-twenty Highway Two corridor study with the DOT. Part of the the roundabout was one of the projects that they thought would be a good priority, priority for them. The other idea they had was taking, actually using the shoulder of the road between Big Y and Leavenworth, ride ride the bus on. So we're actually taking that, we're studying that to see if that's feasible. Because as you know, there's times of the year you can't get in the Leavenworth. So we have this shoulder that we could drive on, versus you're able to use it, bus to use it, and then speed traffic out. Kind of like an angel. So we started that study this year. So our economic impact, so our projected revenues for twenty twenty-four is about below thirty-six million dollars. Sales tax, twelve of it, seventy-six percent of about almost twenty-eight, twelve. We're currently funded at six tenths of one percent, and that the six tenths started this year. Federal grants, estate grants, come around, uh, we lost the rest of it. Expenses about twenty-eight million dollars, wages and benefits, as of your organization, it's a big substantial upgrade. So it's about seventy-five percent of our costs. Twelve and a half, below twelve million dollars, strictly wages was back to the front, so I think that's a good economic here, bucks thing. Spine services about five million dollars, we're trying to buy everything we can. Capital, we have about twenty, almost twenty-three million dollars of capital projects. Vehicles. So the capital projects are twenty-three million. Remember that big grassy area that we talked about in the facility? We're building a big, close to you, probably one thousand split. That will house all electric buses, and that will be built into the last wing for the next. This facility is twenty-five years old, it'll last for one hundred and twenty-five, three hundred years, if you can turn, I'll give it up. The other house, it will be all battery electric, probably, I I bet, it looks fine, especially. Facility, they have a budget. So a budget, and uh, and so our H two designing force and Ed Archer are still being, basically, playing a lot of the game. Seventeen million dollars. But I gave it. So gotta do it cheaper now. So I think as you know, that we have, like with your bid for Rashid Park. They get eight, if we bid something.
Yeah, seven.
Seven? That's pretty remarkable. I mean, so things are loosening up. From what I hear, things, you know, we have companies from Seattle now bidding. Which means they're they're getting a little more hungry, so hopefully, if we pick the price, the we don't have to build the varying standards, so. Um, other local investments for this year, uh, it's Aniat Park and Ride owns a property there, so we want to develop that park and ride there. Oh, I'm sorry, Aniat, they were partnered with Aniat, they have a partial plan, they have a small ramp door. It's uh, we come in, we stop every day, so we're part of the, we set park ride. We do also land in Rock Island, we're going to develop that this year. Many bus stop improvements and bus stop improvements have to be ADA's, so from the curb to the back has to be eight feet deep, at a minimum of five feet wide. We like eleven feet wide, so we put a shelter. So it's not every place you go to put a bus stop, then you can actually get that eight feet deep. And so that's a challenge. Can't, they have exceptions for that, but that's kind of our goal, I'm afraid, of all our bus stops at that level. Um, and then the tread steady, trail steady. Bus replacements, so these are not electric, they're diesel, but Mission Ridge and Waterville are very difficult places to serve because it's seven miles up to Waterville, about three or four, five miles up to Mission Ridge. And so they'll buy special built diesel big rivers that have self-chains. The crop, you know, and they could be beautiful, probably last two, next nine, thirteen years. Four of these, four of these uh facility for uh Waterville and Mission Ridge. And there'll be wraps, Mission Ridge will have a wrap on it, so they're looking to ski us. Waterville, you've probably seen the Waterville bus coming through here, the twenty-two has a doctor or somebody on it, it's water, it's it's the wrap, so it doesn't go to Waterville. So we're gonna take that wrap and wrap the Waterville buses, so that you'll get to see what the see the wrap. So back in twenty nineteen, uh, Richard dropped, the previous, you know, manager, we went out and we increased ourselves tax by two tenths, one percent. For what we call Vision twenty twenty. For Vision twenty twenty, for every dollar, twenty cents, we built senior disabled services, fifty-five cents, we built expanding pitch route, and twenty-five cents, we built capital. So that's, it's a six-year plan, starting in the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-six. Things we've done to improve so, we've done so far, um, in July twenty twenty, we had a big we implemented Sunday service for the first time, that that was a big thing for us. We've never had Sunday service. Started off slow, but now it exceeds Saturday and has less hours than Saturday, really well recently. These are other things that we've done throughout the the years to to move on here to accomplish. Uh, Leavenworth Service, so I want to kind of bring this up to you, uh, kind of talk to you about the amount of service we have. So Route twenty-two is forty-four trips per uh per day, Monday through Friday. Starts at four thirty AM on the station, the last trip out of Leavenworth at nine o'clock. Um, Saturday, Sunday, it starts at seven on the station and leaves Leavenworth at six twenty-five in the evening. The express, the one twenty-two, which we was talking about, they have six trips now, starting at six AM on the station, last trip, they uh, I love the work, so. Very hot. We also have uh the school. Snow year, obviously. So the Leavenworth Dart, that's give a public Sunday service at seven thirty AM, six PM on the Friday, nine to six, Saturdays and Sundays. And the shuttle will return this summer. So we should, we're working with uh, we're working with Troy now, Chamber. He's got some ideas. Actually, it was like, maybe to get an electric bus, get a wrap, with their inside out, and have a, you know, serve what we're selling. That's the goal. Okay, so um, this is our ridership for uh twenty twenty-three, and then as you can see, the ridership has grown quite a bit each month. And we had the major service redesign, uh, redesign in July twenty twenty-two. Um, there's significant improvements in twenty twenty-four. And in twenty twenty-four, January, so far for this year, it's twenty percent over the twenty-three. February was thirty percent over twenty twenty-three. And March, come in, we'll have over a hundred thousand mornings for one month first. So it is actually what we do. And this is kind of a store of the ridership, so in twenty twenty-three, we get one point one million riders, told. For a picture of over a million warriors, first time, that's just one thing, so it's actually data. We were talking a little bit earlier, and we were telling them hard part about after COVID, a lot of this happened, but we couldn't hire anybody. And finally, June of last year, twenty twenty, June of twenty-three to December, we hired forty-four to push out. Which that we've added probably about twenty-four thousand service hours, which is really pushing us up. Uh, these are the mornings, these are this, as I said, Leavenworth, it's our best route in the system. This is how many mornings for uh one month, it's about fifty thousand showing. This is the express down here, and it's big enough fraction. Uh, Vision twenty twenty delivered three marks forty-four. Okay, so we should be, you just think hundred percent divided by six is seventeen percent a year. So we should be, we should be gaining about seventeen percent of Vision twenty twenty every year. So roughly, three marks of twenty twenty-four, we should get sixty-three percent, we're actually at seven point four percent. This is just kind of a little uh scorecard to keep, to give to the board, to let them know where we're at. Do the thing to accomplish, get hired, send a little state of stuff, help service to one AM, capital, including some silver. Oh, yes. Yeah, we have some wheels, April twenty kit, we have a house, powder shot. And these are truly white floors. Look like that. So it's open to public, we'd love to have you come up. And have some uh mocktails, we've got a mocktail, which is very stuff, mocktail. More prizes, it's our operation base, we put animals, so we're blessed to be able to. Any questions?
Nick, do you have a dollar figure for gas savings that you uh would have with the twenty-three electric vehicle or buses?
Yeah, so if you take a a diesel vehicle, operates about fifty-eight cents a mile, electric is about nine, eighty-nine cents a mile. And the carbon credits we get, we're actually making one. They are, you know, there's no oil changes. May, it's, you smell May, it's not, because it breaks your and everything else, but as far as the power of operating.
Yeah. Cool, thanks.
As e-bikes get more and more popular in the United States, they're heavier. And I I have a couple e-bike, my son's an e-bike, I have an e-bike. Mine, one of the drivers was giving me a hard time, it was kind of heavy. Is is that, is that the the bike rack system on the front, is that something you guys have come across or in thinking about? Because
We've upgraded our bike that several times because they just started off, the skin of your tires, and I was like, eh, not here, I think. Believe in it, I'll double check my one hand, I believe it's about a fifty pound of it. So it should be able to carry.
I was just curious, yeah, so fifty pounds.
You know, and bikes are a big thing, and that that trail study goes through, and they actually have the trail, you know, there's folks that ride down Leavenworth, take a bike back. There's three position bike racks on our bus. So we've been discussing for years, how do we get more bikes, bus, can we bring it inside, allow it to operate inside at times? Uh, it's a challenge for every transit system. There's, there's, you know, that's the next step of what we would like to see is possibly working with our service, different trailheads, different recreational. Uh, we were talking actually to the Chamber, which really was uh operating uh a service for the intertubing, right down the, I said, river. So those are the things, I think, that's the next step, the way getting involved with those recreational, keeping bus cars out of the area and more transit. Anything else, Randy?
You probably wouldn't remember this, but I was chair when I six ninety-five.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that was my lucky year.
Was it? So you remember that too?
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks, Nick.
Thank you.
All right. Next we've got um Animal Care and Control is going to do a presentation for us.
Hello, I'm James Pump, I'm the executive director for the National Community Society, as well as our Animal Care and Control uh field services.
I've shared it, sorry.
Uh, thank you for having us, I really appreciate it. Okay, to tell you a little bit about our organization, we really are focusing on bringing pets and people together. Some of our team programs are around adoption for animals that are homeless and they need to find new homes. Uh, also, lost pet reunification, we have one of the highest percentages of reunification for lost pets in the country. We're at forty-five percent. Um, we always want to exceed that, so we're currently exceeding the national average, which is less than twenty percent. Uh, the intake replacement, we really focus similar to a hospital, um, as soon as an animal comes into our care, we'll plan it for their outcome. What is that appropriate outcome? If they're a lost pet, it's always trying to reunify them with their families. If it's an animal with a medical condition, it's to ensure that they get appropriate uh treatment. If it's a behavioral case, uh, we're focused on how to treat them effectively and how to uh find an appropriate home. A little bit about our organization in terms of our national averages, we actually reported to Shelter Animals Cal, it's a national database. So we can not only look at where the trends are nationally, we actually can project out several months in terms of what our intake might look like, and then we usually pivot right on spot, so we can plan for intakes. Um, we always want to make sure that we maintain appropriate capacity for care of someone to a hospital. We want to make sure that we're operating at eighty percent or less um, to ensure that if there's a boarding case or mass casualty incident for animals, that we're able to effectively respond to that. Um, you can see where we fall in terms of our county, um, for cats and dogs, in terms of the state and national averages. We currently exceed the national average for a facility of our size. And we're always really focused on protection and public safety, um, how we get ahead of issues around bites. Uh, incidences around dogs and hot cars, which is a primary issue that we see in Leavenworth. And then people in community center, we want to make sure that we're effectively addressing the root causes of family separation um, in terms of why are families uh having to give up their pets? Research tells us about eighty percent of people that are looking to surrender their their pet, if they're giving access to veterinary care or access to behavioral care, then they they would be, they choose to keep their pets. In January and February of this year alone, we provided uh five hundred and fifty-four pets in our community of food. So that's thirty days of meals for each one of those five hundred and fifty-four pets. And looking at our outcomes and why animals come into our care, uh, the overwhelming majority come into our care as strays. Um, and a smaller percentage come in through owner surrenders. Uh, we do owner surrenders by appointment. And we really look at that as an option, uh, to have a conversation, um, if it's a behavioral concern or medical concern. How can we keep that pet and that family together? Um, recently, we've worked with an individual that had uh too many animals and and uh we were working with social services with them, um, they were able to retain three of their dogs and we were able to quickly find homes with the remaining ten. Um, our outcomes will look at adoption, return to owner, and then we also provide a uh uh income qualified owner requested euthanasia service. And a little bit of a breakdown for Leavenworth, um, we investigated fifty incidences in twenty twenty-three. Um, that's everything from neglect to faulty incidents. Um, that's everything from neglect to cruelty incidences, incidences, uh, as well as, uh, uh, animal control based laws. Um, number of phone calls we've received from Lubbock, uh, residents were two hundred and thirty five. Uh, animal cruelty cases were four in, in this area, aggressive dog or animal bites were ten. Uh, domestic animal or livestock at large were eleven. Uh, animal neglect or injured animal were eighteen, lost and dead reports were twenty eight. And then this is a breakdown of all the animals we've received from Lubbock. Uh, a little bit of a breakdown of our field services, cost average, our, uh, we're at the end of our pre-year contract with Lubbock. Um, our costs have dramatically increased, uh, post pandemic, uh, from wage law increases to veterinary, uh, access and veterinary care. We've seen the cost of goods, uh, not only become not available, but also increased from a hundred percent to even a thousand, very said, depending on the specific materials. Our hourly rate and, um, our monthly cost for one ECO is broken down. And then our average five month scene is broken down as well, and as well as our transportation and, and those costs. Um, we try to provide all of that averages, um. Uh, for you and then our average animal costs, uh, for caring for those animals that we receive from residents in Lubbock. Keeping pets and people together, we do that through pet pantry and veterinary care. Um, we are the only low cost, uh, income qualified veterinary, uh, care service within a three hour radius for Shilene and Douglas County. And our pet pantry operates once a month, we are working to expand that, um, with additional partners, we'll be able to do that. Our hope is to offer that every single week. Currently, we operate, um, the last every day of every month. Um, looking at the forty pound, we look at what is a holistic lens in terms of providing a safety net services? So proactive services that prevent separation, prevent stray animals, typically nuisance behavior running at large, bites. Are typically, uh, best addressed when we can, uh, focus on the issues that are leading to those, those concerns. So for example, uh, in, in, individual that dog might be getting out, we would nuke that individual, uh. Walk the property with them, figure out. How the dog's getting out and then how do we potentially remedy that situation? And this year, we're actually expanding our safety net, so we're really focusing, and that's contained in more detail in the packet that we provided to all, um, here in terms of our new strategic plans. So we're at the end of our last three year strategic plan and about to roll out our new three year strategic plan. And it's all about safety net services. And introducing Sergeant Sutton, Sergeant Sutton has been with us for a very long time, but, um, in twenty twenty three was promoted to sergeant. And she just teach a academy at WACDA, so our animal care and control academy statewide, uh, our sergeant is actually instructor for that force. And what we are seeing in Lubbock is a continual rise in, uh, dogs and cars, typically not residents, typically they are tourists. Uh, that is something that we're going to specifically address with a, uh, campaign around dogs in hot cars. And it's something that, uh, does need critical action, dogs can pass away in cars very rapidly. Um, so making sure that we're in contact with your police department, your fire department, so that we can act. And when, when is that threshold in terms of, uh, getting that dog out of that car immediately? A little bit about that issue, and we'd love to have a further conversation of contracts moving forward and, uh, show you our strategic plan. Um, so we'd love to come back and present on those issues and as well as to be able to address, uh, a public campaign around hot dogs in cars. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any questions?
I have a question about livestock. I've noticed that we have a number of chickens roaming around town now, which don't bother me, but I wonder if that's, is that, is that legal?
It's not something that we, it's not part of your current contract with us in terms of handling livestock specifically. We typically handle companion animals, we will handle sick and injured livestock and wildlife in an emergent situation. But that's currently not covered on the contract terms. Happy to discuss, um, it in the future in terms of what is best practice and what are successful in other cities around that issue.
Yeah, okay.
So were you indicating that you're coming back?
We would love to come back to discuss the contract in more detail. Um, and also we are, uh, inviting all the jurisdictions for open house and we'd love to schedule that with you.
Okay, because we have many, 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 more than I've ever seen, big dogs that are not leashed. And, um, people are not following their dog along and taking care of what their dog left. And so, um. That concerns me a lot. I've seen a dog attack another dog that's on a leash. And I, you know, I think we, it's kind of, uh, it feels like it's out of control.
Yeah, dangerous dogs and dog bites nationally are up, um, specifically in Shilene and Douglas County, we're seeing an increased rise. Uh, there's probably a number of contributing factors, uh, one, there's economic factors, uh, associated with, um, people letting their, their dogs out or abandoning their dogs, uh, uh, when the economy, and people are suffering basically economy, so too do the animals. Um, the other contributing factor is three years of the pandemic, we had a whole generation of dogs born without proper socialization. And we're certainly seeing that across the country in terms of behavioral concerns, um, for shelters in, in terms of intake of, of dogs with serious behavioral problems. So that, that is a specific concern. We are launching a, a healthy and safe community, uh, initiative this year to specifically address, um, socialization, bite prevention, and also specifically addressing, um. What kids can do when they encounter a loose dog.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
My, but I see more dogs in cars. Than ever, and, um, some states that pass laws that citizens can take action for like windows. Right? What is the state law in Washington?
A citizen cannot break a window, it has to be.
They can or cannot?
They cannot.
Cannot, okay.
They leave that up to law enforcement. And under, under circumstances, we can enter the vehicle and provide care. Uh, we actually had one a few long ago last year that we are on Front Street, like right in front of everyone and. Uh, we actually went with Shilene County Sheriff's Department and entered the vehicle with a dog.
Yeah.
So yeah, do not break a window at all.
Break one, okay.
What if the door's open?
I would not, yeah, don't, don't. The animal in a vehicle, it can be viewed as theft, so the state of Washington views animals property. Uh, there is some legislation that we're actually working on that will kind of change those parameters. Uh, but as of right now, a lot documented, get license plate, we can run all that information. Uh, even if they're out of town, we will get, we know.
So I love that the PSAs are coming in the county, I'm sure.
Yeah, we definitely recommend calling, remember, pop is a, is a first step, our, our officers will, that's a priority call for us.
Um, so. Okay, that's good. So, so with that said, I'm not familiar with the contract and. Sounds like we're going to be having a discussion for renewing it. Um, you were on call, it appears you're on call.
Twenty four seven, twenty four seven, you're not.
Growing up, my good friend's dad is the dog catcher. Is it, can I say dog catcher? And, uh, so you, you're not here, so if there's a situation, you're traveling from Wenatchee or wherever to make that call, and so is it, it's the dog, it's right by your place. You know, you've seen, make a call, twenty five minutes later, this person's not there and it's, it's, it's over, and it's like. Resources are spent, is that how that plays out?
In the summer months, we try to be more up in Cadmore or Lubbock, so our response time's a little quicker. Uh, we actually do work with the county sheriff's department very closely. Uh, we can place a call to them, at least they can go and get eyes on the scene of the animal. Uh, and then they can keep us up to date with all of that. Uh, we are actually looking at getting better county sheriffs to kind of go over with the deputies, what to look for, what to document, so that we can have all of the resources to pursue them. Come on, actually.
Control is an additional service that can be offered, um. At, at an additional expense, that is something that can be considered in some communities to do that. They certainly could consider it seasonality, um, based on a high tourism, um, to have a control component to it. Uh, that can be costly, but it is something that we can offer. In terms of the legislation around, we, I, I serve on the legislative chair of the law bed, law, Washington Federation of Animal Care Control Associate, uh, Federation. Um, which we're specifically looking at that statewide for next year.
There's also a lot of fear if you report someone's dog or. Uh, do anything. Uh, but ignore the dog that the next night you'll find your window is broken or something like that.
We have seen that in Lubbock, so I think that's kind of the question, right? So we're happy to provide service, uh, most of the time we start off with education. Obviously, it depends, there's like, we go in and there's like, it's fairly messy with the animal, we handle it a little different. Uh, but that is the thing, we get it like with waterfalls as well, is it, we're a small town, right? I grew up in Cadmore. We like to communicate with our neighbors and ideally, that's what we'd like to see people do as well. So I think something that we're going to talk about is, um, how to engage the community. So you can call and report, um, you can actually call anonymously. We like to say that if it's an ongoing issue down the road, we're writing a citation, if it comes to that point, we would like for, for, for party to not be anonymous. Uh, but you can't report anonymously, you're supposed to let the dispatcher know, and then your name essentially is not on that record. Uh, and then in terms of like retaliation, that could be viewed as harassment, things like that. So if there's concern of that, following up with the sheriffs.
That's going to be part of our education, it's neighbors helping neighbors and how we can take the temperature a little bit and just say, hey, we're, we're helping you out. Um, we're giving you some information and certainly we don't jump to enforcement, we jump to education, a conversation. How do we remedy these situations, very different than the dog catchers of the past. Uh, we're really focused on, uh, how we keep pets and people together, and we want both pet and, and the person to, to thrive. So, um, really looking at, uh, what is safe, what's the best practice, uh, that's the result.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right, we will move on to our action items. Action Resolution oh four twenty twenty four, schedule a hearing for alley vacation requests. Ready?
Yes, that is me, thank you. Uh, tonight, the city council is being asked to formally schedule a public hearing for consideration of vacating public right of way. Um, RCW thirty five seventy nine, um, regulates vacation of city street right of way and requires the hearing date be established by resolution. Um, and the passage of this revolution, the resolution, um, it doesn't approve the request. Uh, the public hearing will include a time for the staff recommendation, public comment, and time for the council to discuss. Um, before the council makes a decision on this. Um, this specific request is from the Lubbock Church of the Nazarene, um, for vacation of, um, an easterly portion of Park Avenue that's abutting the property owned by the church. Um, this, I believe, was initially reviewed by the city council during a February council meeting. Um, so this is just to establish the hearing date, I believe it's April twenty third, uh, um, next month. Um, if you look, sorry, in tab eight, there is a map that shows the pro, the proposed vacation areas. Um, the map shows both this, um, resolution and the next one we're going to talk about, but this is specific to that area. It's about, uh, seventy nine feet wide by sixty feet deep. I'm available if there's any questions.
Uh, Maggie, has Steph looked into, um, the option of just vacating this and creating a buildable lot?
Um, I believe, uh, it was discussed with Public Works and we want to maintain some easement for snow storage on this, uh, portion of vacated right of way, if approved.
Which means that's not a possible option.
Right, it would be, it would have a, a city easement to store for snow storage on this area.
We entertain a motion on this resolution.
The Lubbock City Council moves to approve Resolution zero four dash twenty twenty four to schedule a public hearing to consider a partial vacation of Park Avenue.
Second.
I heard a very faint second. Brona, Shane and Brona, any other questions?
Is it a necessity that this be used for snow storage rather than a potential buildable lot for another housing option?
It's a good question, um, there's really no other way to push the snow because it's a dead end. So you have to. Yeah, haul it out, which isn't that feasible. Time and manner, there's driveways at the very end of that road. Something to consider in terms of what is our existing, we, we haven't determined a dimension of the snow storage, so. I don't want to speak for Maggie by any means, like, so I can't attest to, you know, what would be goable or not based on some sort of, you know, but access could be challenging.
I want to look at that this winter, you know, just curiosity how big it was on, this is park, right? Yeah, the park, yeah. And, uh, actually. It's actually been kind of. Boulders are dumped there and we, it looked like it'd already been kind of accessed by whatever they were doing. I mean, it didn't look like there's a bill of space or. How to put that? The border of that space has already been used by the church for something that they stored their rocks and boulders, so I was just.
Yeah, this lot, oh, sorry, this portion of the right of way did what did serve as access to the house that was recently torn down last year. Um, so it, it has been used as their access point, um. I'd have to look, I don't know if it, if. It may, if it were used as a buildable lot, it may land lock some of their property. Um, it, there's, there's several lots there, but worth looking at, um. And, uh, Tom and I will be working on, uh, the language for the dimensions of that easement before the ordinance comes to you next month.
And the Nazarene Church is aware of wanting some of that space for snow removal, right?
I believe so.
There's no storage, ever.
Yes, I believe so, sorry, I didn't know if you heard, heard me respond.
Okay, any other questions? Yeah, this just sets the hearing. All those in favor, let me see your hands. Any opposed? Okay, passage unanimously, and again, similar to that, we've got another one.
Yeah, so this is, again, the same applicant, um, requesting vacation of the alley. Um, it cuts through the church property currently, a portion of it was vacated, um, previously, and you can see in, uh, the exhibit map, it's, um. That, that easterly most portion of the alley was previously vacated, this is just vacating the remainder up to the church property. Um, and again, this is to set the, the hearing date next month.
Maggie, is this the, just the narrow one we're talking about, the twenty foot wide one?
Right, this is the, the alley portion, um.
Already got a parking lot over, right?
Yeah, there's, it's, it's where the parking lot is, there's no city utilities or anything in this. Any other questions?
We entertain a motion.
Lubbock City Council moves to approve Resolution zero five two zero two four to schedule a public hearing to consider a partial vacation. Uh, vacation of the alley south of Hart Avenue.
Second.
Worked by Zeke, seconded by Ann, any other questions? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, I have a question.
Oh, okay.
When, when is that public here, is that going to be the same?
It'll be, yeah, April twenty third as well, both items will be on the same, yep.
Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Any opposed, saying none, if it passes unanimously?
Thank you so much.
Yep, thank you, ma'am. Item ten, Glacier Park Lot Improvements Project Bit Award. Andy.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, council. Um, the hundred before you've made is the Glacier Parking Lot P six improvement, so I know you've heard a lot about this, this is like. Maybe the third time I've come into you on this project, um, but we did finally have the bid opening for this, um. And we received seven bids, we opened on, uh, March fourteen. Um. And our lowest bid is from KRCI from East Wenatchee, um, they came in at three, um. Three million, uh, seventeen thousand dollars, I'm not going to tell you the exact dollar amount, somebody is going to struggle through that right now and you threw that in the.
We can read.
Exactly. Um, one thing that I wanted to touch on that you probably found the packet that I did not explain clearly in the motion, or in the write-up. Uh, was that we did have a bid protest as part of this. So on, uh, Monday, March eighteen, we received a bid protest from First Construction, they would be a parent low bidder. Uh, Monday, March eighteen, we received a bid protest from First Construction, they were the apparent low bidder when we had the bid opening. Uh, but then when we tabulated the bids, KRCI was actually the lowest responsive bidder. Uh, so the protest that we received was in regards to a, uh, summation error. That was in the bid, so when we, when we do the bid opening, we just look at the contractor total that they put at the bottom. And we read those aloud, then after the fact, we go through and evaluate all of the dollar amounts that they have in their proposal. And ultimately what we found in there was that, uh. KRCI had made an error in summing their totals, so we have the unit price. Uh, the unit price multiplied by the quantity gives us the total bid price, and then they add up all of the total bid prices to get the project total at the bottom. Um, there was simply a math error where they summed, they had all of the, um. The bid totals correctly, the bid item totals correctly, but had just summed the project total incorrectly, they were off by forty five thousand dollars. Um, so the bid protest was in regards to that. At the end of the day, we have very clear language in the contract that unit price prevails, so even when we do the bid tabs, we actually aren't looking at their numbers beyond just the unit. Bid price anyway, and so, um, you know, ultimately, um. Tom and Tom Grastra sent documentation back to them stating that we had a clear path for that KRCI was the lowest responsive bidder. And ultimately they ended up dropping their bid protest, but I didn't want to be transparent in why that was included in there and what that looked like. Um, again, there's very clear contractual language, so there was no sound argument there, uh, therefore tonight. We recommend awarding to KRCI of East Manachee, um. This is higher than our original estimate for this project. Um, during bidding, we ended up making some modifications to the restroom, um, and some other components of the project via a dentum. Uh, so the engineer's estimate. You know, during, that was updated, um, during bidding, ended up being around thirty point three million dollars. Um. But I know that wasn't the number I had previously given you, I think, I think before I told you the, the two point seven to three million dollar range, so we are higher than that. Uh, but with the additional modifications we need for building, we were expecting that. And, um, it sounds like, I don't want to put you on the spot, but Shantel has, has looked at this and we do have the parking revenue available to use for this project.
Your budget amendment at the April ninth meeting will reconcile this entire fund for you, so you'll have a clear picture, but yes, I forbear drop numbers. Funding to cover this.
Okay.
So actually, it's more than just the three million something, when everything's done? Or is this, is this?
This is, yeah, three point zero one seven million dollars.
That's what it is, that's the final.
That's numbers from KRCI, um, and also to be clear, we will be coming back to you for a construction management contract. With, you know, the design of this project to oversee construction. Uh, so I'll be coming back to it the next council meeting with that, and then also some, uh, additional costs that we. That we ran into during the design phase, uh, more to come on that, but, uh, just so you know, there, there is more money to be spent on this project.
Been voice listed here.
Yeah, this is just for the construction contract.
Construction, okay.
Well, I'll do.
I'll entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to accept the construction bid and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with KRCI LLC. For the Glacier Parking Lot Improvements Project in the amount of three million seventeen thousand one hundred and seventy four dollars and seven cents.
Second.
By Anne, seconded by Shane, any other questions?
Andy, just out of curiosity, do you know when they plan to break ground?
I actually just talked to them, so, um. We have some leeway in the contract, um, I think. It's most typical that within twenty days we start issuing note, or, uh, working days. Uh, that being said, we also have the flexibility to work with them, uh. Their goal is to, to begin before May first. Um, and they're anticipating starting with the bathroom, so all their efforts are going to be put into the restroom. Um, and then, and as part of that, they will be closing sidewalk companies and then expand to the rest of the parking lot, they're just hoping to have the parking lot to serve for a minimal amount of time.
Okay.
The other questions?
Didn't, uh, what was the, um, protected completion date? For this project?
Um, I think I calculated it up to be August fifteenth or so, mid-August, assuming that we. Um, assuming that we start charging working days within twenty days of this meeting, I think is how I.
So we'll be.
One hundred working days.
We'll be without that lot for that amount of time.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's the worst case scenario, yeah.
Right, any other questions?
What are the chances of it going over in time?
Um, there's likely damages if they go over in time, so that's, yeah, they get damages per day that they go over, so. That's ultimately what we have to hold them to.
August fifteenth is probably a pretty solid date. Yes, the mission.
And that includes, uh. Well, that does include the whole project, that being said, if there are long lead times on things like electrical components, uh, we can pause the project. Uh, and pause working days so that they can actually acquire those materials.
So there could be.
It could be, yeah.
Okay.
We do, we do have it, yeah, we do have it in the contract though, uh. Parking lot needs to be open within that period and then we will have temporary power in place specifically for the parking kiosks. So that once the parking lot is done, even if we don't have all of our electrical components in place, uh, we can begin charging for parking.
Okay, so there's the contingent plan with.
There is, yeah.
Sorry, I had one more, there are no, there's no possibility to have. Part of the parking lot open while this project's going on, that the whole lot has to be closed.
You know, that's what I'm going to say for worst case scenario, that is their intention and more than anything is just for public safety, so that people aren't in the construction zone. Um, especially knowing that we have to demo some of, so that, uh, as we indicated, we're expanding the bus lane. And so in able, in order to do so, we have to demolish the sidewalk that's there and it'll be moving back. Uh, so more than anything, we just don't have a safe path for pedestrians, uh, to access that parking lot, so that's our intention is to have it closed. Um, that being said, though, if. If as part of that restroom, they're going to leave, you know, not disturb the rest of parking lot and have clear access open, we can evaluate that, but. For now, the intention is to have it be closed.
Cool, thank you, Andy.
Yeah.
Any others? Okay, all those in favor, let me see your hands. Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, I know what I was going to ask, is it too, I won't put the thing. Are we, you know, floated away again, dang it? Oh, I know what it was. Are we doing parking meters or a kiosk or anything?
Yeah. Kiosk, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
We're getting the meters, we're doing kiosks even on the street, so. All right, next item. Interlocal agreement for Link Transit, item number eleven, Andy.
Yeah, so this is a supplemental agreement to the interlocal agreement with Link Transit that we brought to you, um, in twenty twenty three. So this is for the Icicle Road Roundabout, we had an interlocal agreement for our water main. Uh, so as you know, we are currently in design for a new transmission main from the wellfields. To Icicle Road and then from Icicle, the intersection of Icicle Road and US two, and then down US two to Mel Street. Um, so knowing that Link was constructing the roundabout this past summer, we entered into this interlocal agreement with them in order to construct a portion of our water main that would be under the roundabout limits. And that way, when we get design or, uh, construction funding for this, we don't have to go in and rip up the brand new roundabout. Uh, so in our original, um, interlocal agreement, we had included the scope of. Design and construction services, but we hadn't actually included the cost of construction itself because we hadn't bid the project at that time. Uh, so truthfully, I stubbed my toe on this and I didn't realize until recently that this wasn't already for you, so I apologize. I really overlooked it this summer and made a mistake there, so now I'm coming to you, uh, we have all of the final construction totals. Um, so we are looking at two hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and ten dollars as the construction cost for the water main that we put in as part of this project.
Questions?
And this is to reimburse something that they've already done, right, it's in place at the time, right? Yeah, that's what I thought.
So what happens if it gets voted down?
Jif, pathetically.
I guess you just take my salary for the next couple of years.
It makes fifty years.
Start by having a conversation with.
He rips out our water main.
We can pull it too. Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplemental agreement number one. To interlocal cooperation agreement between the city of Leavenworth and Link Transit for US Highway two and Icicle Roundabout project for construction of the city's water main. In the amount of two hundred and thirty one thousand one hundred and ten dollars and ninety six cents.
Second.
Worked by Anne, seconded by Sharon. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands, passes unanimously.
Oh, you voted yes?
Okay, now we'll talk about keeping up that roundabout, Tom?
Yes, thank you, our four county members, Mayor, good evening. This is a, a housekeeping item, there's no costs associated with this. Um, generally speaking, DOT requires a maintenance, operation and maintenance agreement associated with the roundabout. Uh, basically, what this agreement does is it spells out. Roles and responsibilities for the city and Washington, and I noted in the write-up, just briefly, in summary. The city's going to maintain the illumination system, all roadway surfacing and associated striping outside of the DOT right of way. And we will maintain sidewalk and ADA ramps and the built-in entrance sign, sign, excuse me, and Washington agrees to maintain the roundabout roadway surfacing inside DOT right of way along with. A signing and the tub water panel and gate arm, and they agree to plow the, um, uh. One thing to note, this is very much consistent with the existing memorandum of understanding. Between the Association of Washington Cities and Washington for highways that act the city streets, so this is, this is something that, so this is again, just a house item. With that being said, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute an operation and maintenance agreement between Washington State Department of Transportation. GMB twelve forty two and the city of Leavenworth associated with the US two and Icicle Road Roundabout.
Second.
Sharon's waiting for this, you gotta get quick. Worked by Anne, seconded by Sharon, any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands, passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Next item, also yours, Tom, the grant agreement for US Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration, Safe Streets.
Andy's going to take that one.
Oh, she is. They didn't, my cheat sheet is wrong. Okay.
Uh, so, so this is a grant agreement with, um, FHWA for a safe streets and roads for all safety action plans. So as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law, um, the SS four A program, as they call it, was created to ultimately, um. Reduce roadway deaths as part of their target zero mission. Um, so in developing a safety action plan, um. Yeah, it'll be a, uh, in-depth process, but as part of that, uh, part of the outcome will be to identify improvement projects. And so then, once we have a finalized plan, then we can apply for funding for implementation and demonstration grants, and part of that includes capital projects. It also includes other, other safety measures or purchasing of other equipment in order to make our roads more safe, just depending on what we find as part of this study. Uh, so I do want to note, this is a fiscal year twenty twenty three grant that we got. Um, the fiscal year twenty twenty four applications just opened and this program is funded until twenty twenty six, so. Um, I think that this is a really timely thing that we're investigating and, um. This was the second year of the program that we applied for this funding under, um. The total cost of the safety action plan is the one hundred and fifty eight thousand seven hundred dollars that's listed in your pocket. Um, everything under this program has a twenty percent match, so we will be contributing twenty percent out of our streets fund and then eighty percent is funded through this FHWA program. Uh, and ultimately, this is the grant agreement with FHWA for the safety action plan.
So this is a, this is just a plan.
It's just.
I make this plan and just for city streets, highway two through town, or? Where does this take place?
You know, that is a good question, um. It is, I, I believe it's everything within city limits, uh, falls under that, at the same time, I do need to further investigate the Washington impacts. Uh, but generally, I'll just say, yeah, I think it will include all of that.
And in order to actually. This qual, if we, we pass this. And fund this, this is what qualifies us to actually make application for actual construction costs, is that what this is?
Once we finalize the plan, so we'll hire consultants to write the plan and, you know, research all the background information, our collision, collision data. Um, they'll make recommendation, it, it'll be more than just implementation projects, so they'll also make recommendations. Um, for things that we could include as part of our code to make things more safe, to make our roadways more safer, um. Things of that nature, and then also a component of that will be any implementation, so, um. You know, for example, that could look like right in, right out at a certain location or, or something like that, um, but it also could be larger capital. Capital projects that we see as being a major safety project that would reduce collisions. Am I answering your question?
Well, I'm just wondering what the purpose, I wasn't quite sure, it says construct countermeasures is necessary.
Yeah.
And so. I mean, would you have it? Do you have a big issue with safety? I mean, I mean, they said, I mean, we're spending, looks like they're funding. The biggest chunk, but we're throwing in the, as far as the city, city's contributing the thirty one thousand, right?
Yeah, yeah, so I, uh, I guess at least from my perspective, I think not only is this the right move in the long term, because it does open up funding. Depending on what type of projects we recommend as part of the plan, but it also is an evaluation for us to know what the safety concerns are in our roadway. So we do have collisions that happen in the city, and this will investigate why and what the primary pattern is between those. Uh, and that way we can make better decisions to make our roadways more safer for our community. And in addition, if, and, and that's more where I'm talking about the five million, or the five billion dollars. Over the life cycle of this program is that. Say, for example, uh, which I do know in looking at some of our collision data, that there is crash history at the Pine Street, so Fur and Chumpstick Highway.
Hmm, okay.
So as you know, we also, as part of safety measure, but also, um, driven by traffic. Patterns, I've looked at a roundabout there, so this plan may recommend that we put a roundabout there. And then, once it's part of our plan, that could be funded. The project itself to actually construct that could be funded through the SS four A program.
So actually, yeah, so that's what I was kind of driving at, Andy, is this, if we don't do this. Then we don't have any access, access to the five billion, whatever.
We're adding up here, yeah.
Okay, that's probably the biggest part here is just. So we can qualify ourselves for that money.
Yeah. So, yeah, you have another question?
No, go ahead.
To, to piggyback that. When you say opens up funding, potentially some matching dollars, I mean, this is just. Not grants involved, this is some free monies, th- this thirty one thousand dollars is kind of giving us an opportunity above and beyond the safety, of course, one. Two is there's some monies.
Absolutely, yeah, and there, like I said, there's five billion dollars over the five years of the program, um. And then also, yeah, like, I thi- I think it's clear, but if we don't have this plan approved. Finalized and approved by FHWA, we don't have the availability to apply for any of the funds under this program for an implementation project.
Well, and that's, it's the natural course, this gets approved tonight. We're going to get in this program and it's like, they'll make some recommendations and. We're going to fix those recommendations, this is on this path of spending money, is what we're, is what's going to happen here.
Yeah, and everything under the program is eighty percent grant funding from FHWA, twenty percent city.
So we know that going into it.
Yeah, any project across the board, safety action plan or a capital, uh, safety project.
Yeah, that's great, okay.
And we have something to slide in there before the billion's gone.
Well, more than anything, this plan will be finalized before the, the program ends.
Okay.
And we don't know what this program is going to look like in the future, we anticipate this is something long-term that they've made fund. That's way above my pay grade, but that is the conversations that we've had at like the CDTC Technical Advisory Committee meetings, is this is something long-term we anticipate they're being funding for because. There, the US DOT has their target zero of zero roadway deaths and, uh. How do they phrase it, zero roadway deaths and serious injuries or.
Choosen acronym for.
Other languages for that, uh, like twenty thirty.
So you, I mean, you, I don't think you have a whole lot of projects going on now. And so I think what this is going to do, right? What this is going to do, is this going to, what, where does this hit the priority? This seems like this is a. You start getting on it, it's like this will. You start getting on it, it's like this is a lot of good monies and good, safe, good, good, good things here, right?
I'm not gonna be writing it, if I'm being honest, I intend to hire consultants. I, I'm happy to make it a priority because I think it's really important. For the safety element of our city and also for the funding that it opens up.
The more we talk about it, I mean, it's really becoming more and more clear that this is a pretty good idea.
Awesome, even better.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna vote, but.
Andy, do you know about how long it'll take for them to develop this plan?
Yeah, I haven't been finalized, um, well, it has to be finalized in two years.
Okay.
The goal would be before.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a quick question, just, um, flashing back to election, election issues and thinking about. Um, the safety of Pine Street after school Titus Road, that would, that, that would be part of this.
Absolutely, yeah. And I know there is collision data, we have some really good footage from our Pine Street project, the study that we did there.
Yeah.
Um, and again, I'm just using that as an example because I cannot say that that is something that they'll recommend having a roundabout there. But that is just an example of what could come out of the study when they look at specific locations and crash history there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, that could be represented.
Thanks, yeah.
Any other questions? And entertain a motion.
Lebanon City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the fiscal year twenty twenty-three safe streets and roads for all grant agreement. With the United States Department of Transportation Federal Highway Administration. For the city of Lebanon's Safe Action Plan Project in the amount of one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Shame on you, Travis. I know.
Yeah, you're pretty quiet.
We were trying to get Rona in there. Okay, Travis, move by and second by Travis. Any questions, Travis? For all of the favor, let me see your hand. Passing unanimously.
Thank you.
Action item fourteen, uh. Proposal for a mobile office structure for public works, Tom.
Thank you, Mayor Cory. This action item, uh, for you, this evening, city council members, is associated with a. A law, Councilmember Rick Mastor alluded to this in the study session. But we are in need of more private office and train space for public works. We blew a history. The former Parks Division Building, which we refer to as the Ops Shop or the Ops Building. It's located across the street on Fourteenth Street from Upper Valley Men. Uh, the community covered and. Just recently in twenty twenty-three, the Parks Department need, excuse me, Parking Department moved from City Hall down to this, the Ops Building. And at first, Rick Evans, he, you know, he's a Streets Utilities Division Supervisor, has, has nine direct reports. So he has a need for private office space for various reasons. And so he utilized space inside the Ops Building for that because he currently does not have a private office in, in the shop office area. Um, that, we were able to work with the Parking Department by like scheduling time in the Ops Building for his one-on-one. And his private office need, however, since the Parking Department is growing and they've added additional staff. It has become too cumbersome for, for Rick to schedule. Time for a one-on-one and, and private office need, so. The proposed interim solution until there's a new public works campus is to purchase a mobile office. And this is through Pacific Structures and this, um, vendor is already procured through KCD, which is a government purchasing cooperative. We're a member of this, so we meet all the state procurement requirements to go. To, you know, the competitive bidding requirements. And a couple of things to note is that. Cost of the trip, the cost of the mobile office is one hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents. Due to the building code requirements that we have at the city, this mobile structure has to meet the Wildland Urban Interface Code. Along with our stringent snow loading requirements, therefore it has to be custom-made and that precludes a lease option. So we, we have to purchase, nonetheless, if we have to, if we had to lease for five years or more, it's more cost-effective to purchase anyway. And we don't anticipate a new public works campus for at least five years. So regardless, this is the most cost-effective option is to purchase the mobile structure. And due to the Parking Department kind of being the impetus for the displacement of public works, we're recommending that this is out of the Parking. Parking fund to cover this mobile structure. And provided in the packet under tab fourteen, there's a really basic site plan that shows where the mobile office, mobile office will be placed. And one additional item will have to, uh, address the listed electrical service, which is central to huge. There was existing, an existing temporary service there for the job trailers associated with the waste garbage and plant expansion project.
Any questions?
Can we use the Parking Enterprise Fund for public works office space?
Parking took their facility.
Right, but Parking's not gonna be using this.
Right, so they're purchasing the, the Ops Building when we're gonna use that money to purchase the other.
That really happened, you know?
Parking, Parking, the Parking Department staff will use this because it's gonna be used as this training room and this work, starting workstations of theirs, but. Presumably, there will be workstations.
This is, this corner at the end of my street is becoming this quilt patchwork. Public Works, Lebanon Worth Corner, and this is one more little addition to that, to that spot. And I've, I've landed, um, some Will Scott trailers on different sites over the years and I. Been renting them and they're really fairly inexpensive and you pay the company. Not knowing what the future holds with, you know, we're, we're. We're, you know, I think we're moving forward, we're working on the library going to, um. The Osborne School and building this out and all these different, there's a lot of things in the air with, with the city buildings and infrastructure. And not knowing what the future holds in five years or, or you say five years, you say the word interim. So when you're talking about purchasing something and you use the word interim at the same time, it's kind of this funny interim. Um, leads me to think of lease and you, you mentioned, I understand snow load and have you, you've researched. Like Will Scott or something those along the lines to, to drop.
Yeah, so I, so we are, we're a, a member of KCD, and so they do mobile classrooms for schools. So they, so without, so this allows us to streamline the process so we don't have to go out to a formal bid. Um, again, it, this has to be a custom, so even if we lease. A, you know, shell from another vendor or even this vendor, like it still has to meet setbacks, it has to be building though, which is the Wildland Urban Interface. And snow loading, so it has to be custom-built. So our snow loading is eighty-five pounds per square foot, so this is not a standard.
Yeah.
On the walk, this, and also the, the, the siding has to be a cement-based siding and non-wooden.
Okay. So with that said, is it portable?
It is.
Okay, so five years, still a good space and we can, we can move it?
We can move it, yeah, okay, yeah.
Any other questions? And entertain a motion.
The Lebanon City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to purchase a Pacific. Mobile structures, ten by twenty-four, two-room mobile office structure in the amount of. One hundred thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars and eighty-one cents.
And, no. Second.
By Sharon, second by Roma. We have second thoughts, but. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, council.
Now for the fun one. Purchase proposal for the Osborne Playground, Tom.
Yes, once again, thank you, Mayor Cory. Council members, once again, good evening. This is a really exciting, exciting action item. Um, this presentation expectations, I'll be brief, I'm just gonna give a little bit of background. But in terms of, of latest improvements and, and changes we've made to the proposal, I'm gonna take it to John Shon, so Parks Division Supervisor. And the Neighborhood Playground Committee Leader to, uh, explain to the council what changes we've made recently. And also, before we begin, big shout out to the Neighborhood Playground Committee. We have Councilmember Sharon Waters, we have Lisa Barrett, Maggie Richter. Catherine Ferguson, and of course, John Shon, our Parks Division Supervisor, who's been meeting the Neighborhood Playground Committee again. They're all here, so thank you for your involvement. Silence. So a little bit of background of. So the city council is being asked this evening to approve the, the purchase proposal provided by Great Western Recreation. And there's been a need identified at the Osborne site for some time regarding the playground, um. Our insurance company, WCIA, Washington City's Insurance Authority, they had a certified playground inspector come out and inspect the playground. And definitely further supported the need to upgrade the playground. Terms of funding, I do want to give a big shout out to Chantel. She had a great idea to use our ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act funds. To partially fund this upgrade, so we have five hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars of COVID money, basically to, to fund this project. Um, and then since then, since that was kind of the direction. That Chantel supported and the council subsequently supported, a Neighborhood Playground Committee was formed last summer. And the folks I mentioned started meeting and just started going down, you know, what? What would be an ideal playground? And Councilmember Waters, you mentioned kind of the, the example of, you know, how could we? How can we make this as inclusive as possible? So that's where we developed, you know, the full-on, poured-in-place rubberized surface. And, and, and I wasn't at this study session, but John Shon, my understanding, did a great job presenting the features to the council about. How we, and it's gonna be a, just a, basically a gold standard playground in terms of inclusivity for not only ADA. But also, uh, sensory type of kiddos that, that need that kind of sensory feedback. Um, and so again, it's gonna be a demonstration site for those types of, of playgrounds.
And seniors.
Yeah, and, and of course, thank you, Councilmember Waters. And there's gonna be, uh, an adult exercise component as well. So it, uh, what it, I'm gonna purchase, multi-generational, multi-generational.
I'd be quick to see you in there, Sharon.
I'll be there every day.
Um, in terms of what we finalize in terms of. Um, playground feature that like to kick it to John in terms of the, the latest upgrades.
Well, thank you. I'll keep it pretty brief, but I wanna give you an update. So the last time we came in and talked to you guys, um, about a month ago, about the Playground Committee. And so we finalized the multi-generational exercise equipment, we rebuilt that type of equipment. Uh, based on the feedback we got from our, um, industry professionals that we reached out to. Uh, so our quick list of what's gonna be included and it's also in the design. Uh, hand cycle, both types, standard and accessible models. Uh, parallel bars, assistive functional trainer, leg press, the chest press, a lap pull-down. And a combination fitness set. And I will note that also the chest press and the lap pull-down, pull-down are both, um, they serve both accessible and standard function. So they're double-sided. And so meaning that you could use it with a mobility device. Uh, and then. Also attached in your packets, I believe, is the results of the survey. And so that's the next thing I wanted to touch on. Is we have, um. We firmed up the three options that were up for. Up for input in the community and. So the results are the inclusive world, one over the seesaw for, um, Area A, which is to the southwest. Of the layout for the footprint. And it won by a very small margin, so I think we're pretty happy we'll get on the committee. Uh, it was kind of our preferred one going into it.
You said the world?
Yes. Yeah, exactly. But the seesaw was really cool, so if we build another playground.
Put it down in the chairman.
That was all the stuff, uh. So for Area B, which was the center of the footprint of the, of the playground. It was the Century Dome versus the Catalina Climate, and Century Dome won by a very large market, uh. It looks like about sixty percent or so. Uh, so that's great, it's a great piece of equipment. Uh, and then for Area C. Uh, that was the Vista Arc Sphere against the Vista Skyro. Tower and the Vista Arc Sphere won by a pretty good margin, like it's like about forty-five thousand. And that, that one, I believe, won out because it did not lose a slide. The other one, where the missus did us reliving a slide, and it wasn't that much better of a primer, but it was a slide. But just by then. Uh, and then there's some data attached in your packet to who of the responders, but we had generally about three hundred. Uh, folks that responded and then of various age groups and grade levels. And so. I would like to note how at this point, the committee did not come to consensus on the colors. So that is something we, we are working through, uh. And we, we will be meeting on Thursday to, to decide the, the colors. Uh, well, obviously, we both know we both need to know.
I will know color if something do, right?
Yes, and the color will, thank you, the color will not, uh, will not affect the final press.
That might be the hardest one for you guys to come up with.
No, so actually, so the company sent us this really cool, and I haven't even talked to them yet, this is brand new. So I just found out about this, this one. So they, they have a design, um, program that they gave us access to. So you can have a three, an interactive three D model and you can change and you can put any of their color displays or any of their colors to this.
Yeah.
And when they click on the button, it'll change it to that color and then you can go around three D, zoom in. It's gonna be very cool. I think it's gonna help us make our decision.
Yeah.
But to, to summarize, we picked this color from a little tan color squash. Which you can see in the very back of this proposal and.
A lot of faces in there.
It was a lot of black, a lot of, a lot of clacky colors. Okay. So the color will be, will be revised probably from this, this, but otherwise, we did the same. Yeah, and.
Yeah, we covered it.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, absolutely.
Looks like the adults answered all these, made all these decisions for the kids. On what, what items? I mean, is this really what the kids want or is this what parents think kids want?
So I'm.
Was there a way to, to, to extract this and see what these kids voted for for the items?
So I do appreciate you bringing that up because our original, um, idea was to go actually into the schools, which is what we did when we designed Waterfront Playground. Um, but because of time constraints and the ability to get this built this year. The path forward with the school district was they, they preferred a survey, an online survey, so. We have the instructions on the survey that we would like your kids input, um, whether we got that or not, I hope.
Yeah.
But that's about it.
The items of selection were, I think, you guys have a good vendor, they, they all look great, day of the day, right? But, but this seems flaring.
Like odd, yeah.
You think that the adults wanted these?
John, I was gonna ask you. Um. They built these, these are, uh, quite extraordinary, you know, uh. Systems, how do they hold up? Have they done, they done this work like say Montana, what I mean, like, where they have the weather extremes and all that kind of thing, have these proven to hold up with? Snow and ice and.
Yeah, Game Time is the, it is the premier vendor of game, gaming, uh, playground equipment. And so you will see it all over the country, every corner of the country, okay, uh. I don't wanna overstate their market share, they, they probably have over seventy percent of the market of commercial playground.
Do they recommend any special care for during the winter, like, so things don't get broken or does that come into the play or?
But one thing that does stick out to me is it looks like there's an umbrella feature that we're probably will have to remove in the winter.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but other than that, I, I don't think there's a special care.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Where is the remainder of the funding coming from?
Good question. I'm gonna refer to Chantel.
Still working on the budget, I mean.
If you want us to approve over a million dollars tonight.
Yeah, so Selby did, uh, talk with me just yesterday, which was, I, I, I wasn't certain about this, but we're. We're close and he, is he still with? Okay, I'm, I might let him speak, um, about a place for Alice. We had funding. So he's working on, how do we get that potential piece? Cause there was about two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand in that almost a million dollar grant shit was for the playground.
And two hundred four fields.
So I can speak to that.
Yeah, let Selby's on, let him talk.
Yeah, I am on, uh, my internet connection might not be fully stable, so, um, please tell me if you cannot hear me. Um, so I heard from, I heard yesterday, today's Tuesday, heard yesterday, um, from HUD. Uh, as Chantel mentioned, the Place for Alice Grant was applied for through Kim Schreier's office, um, by a previous administrator. And. That project, uh, all the elements of that project essentially changed. So this summer, I submitted a technical correction to HUD, which was approved by Congress. Um, and we just got notification on Monday that that technical correction. Um, and we just got notification on Monday that that technical correction was changed. So the grant amount stands at nine hundred and forty thousand uh dollars and change. Um, I don't have it right in front of me, but about four hundred of that would go towards um the mend a thirty-one unit affordable rental project, if it's still applicable, cause that's now closed. Uh, two hundred and four thousand, I think, is the number that would go to the playground and then three hundred odd thousand for um the pool. Um, so I am actually uh reaching out to a grant writer, because even though we have these ear, these funds earmarked, we still have to go through the application process through HUD. Um, and that's a very complicated process. I've never done a HUD grant before, nor has anybody else on staff. So I'm um, I'm gonna phone a friend for that one and get someone on 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 board to help us with that. So that should fund about an additional two hundred thousand dollars of this project.
Yeah. And the rest of it will come from the general fund. Uh, there is a significant reduction in the general fund for legal costs. That you guys settled a litigation with Project Bank. And we had close to a million dollars set aside for that. So we have all the gap funding in the general fund to help cover this.
Lodging tax.
So lodging tax we talked about, do you want this to be a tourist driven park?
Tourists are gonna use it.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't know how much, though.
Yeah.
Exactly.
I would say it's just like, gonna be just like the pool. At least. Huh?
Well, if we if we bu- buy it with lodging tax funds, does that mean that it's eligible to be advertised or be desirable to advertise it by the chamber or around the state if we use that, if we use those funds?
It it would be.
Well, it's going on their website.
Destination place for the fully inclusive certifications. It's gonna be a demonstration site, so if you go to their website, it's gonna listed as.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm just saying, do we want more of the same? I I would tend to say no, but.
It's never fun. It gives the impression that it is a community park. It's a community funded park.
Right.
Uh, your lodging tax fund, could we utilize it legally? Yes.
Okay.
It is a decision that that you can decide to do. Keep in mind, we have more capital cost improvements needed
Mm-hmm.
for the tourism downtown area than we have money. So are we gonna pay for it today from here? But then, does the general fund help support the downtown improvements when we get to those? Or do we pay for our residential park from our general fund today? And we save our lodging tax funds for the improvements related directly to tourists.
So that HUD HUD grant isn't guaranteed?
It's a stat aside, it is guaranteed. It has, you just, we have to go.
We just have to apply for it.
You'd have to go through a backwards application for something that's already been designated.
And correct me if I'm wrong, if for some reason that the HUD funds are not, they don't work out for the hot one, I think you can go towards the the ball field.
Right.
Champ.
Right, there's ball field, there was ball field playground.
Gotcha.
Can you summarize the money part again then? So we, you know, just say we have this, we know we're gonna get that, we could take it out of here, and this is still left. Can someone do that for us?
So so we clearly have five hundred and sixty-six thousand in ARPA funds.
Out of a million, we need a million. Is that right?
One point one million. I've actually, I've actually incorporated one point two million in the budget to give contingency.
Okay.
Should something go awry with this, or after they start doing installation, they decide, oh my gosh, we need to have a little more funding to do X, Y, or Z.
Okay.
So my plan is to budget one point two million for this.
And we have, what'd you say?
The whole one point two million is currently coming out of the general fund.
Okay.
Five hundred sixty-six thousand is ARPA.
Okay.
So they just mentioned approximately two hundred and four thousand. And so the remaining would come out of the general fund reserves.
Which is three hundred and thirty thousand.
Thank you. Roughly.
Yeah, yeah.
And it could come out of lodging tax. We could make that choice.
If if you guys decide we can split it from that, you can.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
I will note there's just a slight change to the final amount on this, so we got an updated cost proposal as of this morning. And the neighborhood playground committee actually pointed out that the sensory domes were not included in that in that um that climber, not some cat.
The panels they go.
Thank you, you don't. Thank you. Yeah, so the panels were not included, and they're actually quite expensive. In addition, we added a side of phone to the music area, so that actually proposal actually increases by twelve thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars. So I have a new total of one million, one hundred eight thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. So again, that's a twelve K increase, but it's in the loop in the motion.
Can you say that in number one?
Yeah, sure. It's it's one billion, one hundred and eight thousand five hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents. That's the, that's the new total.
And sixty-eight cents, you said?
And I'll budget the one point two.
Right.
For safety.
Hey, I would entertain a motion. Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to extolprong. Is that the right one?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, except the Great Western Recreation Fully Inclusive Osborne Playground Upgrades proposal in the amount of one million ninety-six thousand.
Nope, the new one.
Oh, they, okay, one thousand one hundred, I mean, one million, one hundred eight thousand, five hundred twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Second.
We're by it. Yes, that's right. Sharon seconded by Shane. Any other question? All those in favor, let me see your hands. We got a hand or a finger?
I guess I'm in favor.
Okay, passes.
Now, this is cool. This is a, this is gonna be a really awesome playground on the north side of the US too. And in terms of timeline, um we're hopeful, you know, by the end of this, this summer slash early fall, it'll be completed.
And it's the only playground on this side of the highway.
Yeah.
That's correct, yes. And and the only residential park, basically, in the playground area on the other side of the highway.
I mean, I guess that's why I only raised one finger. I I I just have reservations about it being, you know, I know where Sharon lives. I live a block away, basically. And I just have reservations about it not feeling like a community small park on the other side of the highway, but feeling like a tourist attraction. So that's my main reservation about it.
Everything here is a tourist attraction.
Well, not my walking down my street yet, so.
Yeah, oh, well.
Not yet. So anyway.
So over your way, this gets good, good local use and will continue.
Yeah, I think local use.
I mean, that's what I hope too.
Yeah.
I think the locals.
I think it will.
Now that the order can be put in, when do we expect construction to start?
So I, so I understand that Quinn, she has pre-scheduled everything, anticipating this would pass, so she's, they're ready to go. And I don't have an exact time, but there's no delay is mine. And this is again pro, pre-procured through Omni Partners. It's, it's all state contracting, so it's the mayor's sign proposal. And again, I just want to shout out to the neighbor playground, maybe they put in a lot of hours and put this together, so we'll maybe do.
Yeah, thank you.
And they, and they came out of it without scars or anything.
Oh, yeah, they go.
They could go beat themselves up on the current playground.
Okay, we got one more item, local agency agreement. Washington State Department of Transportation Steel Drive Active Transportation Improvement Phase Two.
Sorry, this is not as fun as a playground, but equally important. Uh, so we received funding, uh federal funding routed through the Shalanda Douglas Transportation Council for the Ski Hill, Ski Hill Drive Active Transportation Improvement Phase Two project. Sorry, it's technically very accurate, but very lengthy. So this is an extension of the corridor that we um created last this past summer. And we constructed on Ski Hill Drive from UX Clue to Evan Street. So that's where we constructed sidewalks on the west side of the road and then eliminated parking and converted it to bike lanes. Um, and that is our intention with this project as well. So we'll continue those same corridor improvements from Evan Street up to Pine Street. Um, so as part of this project, again, it's sidewalks on the west side, um removing parking stalls and creating a a buffer separated bike lane. Um, and then we also intend to replace all of the water surfaces that run underneath the new sidewalk. Uh, just as a proactive measure, we did that as part of the phase one project as well. Uh, if you want to be transparent, the cost before you with the local agency agreement does not include any of the water improvements. So, uh, right now, we're conservatively estimating those to be eighty thousand dollars that would be out of the water funds. That's for design, construction, and construction admin. Um, but that's not part of the pro- project total that's before you, because that's separate from the agreement with Wash Dot. It's will be part of the same project, but it's funded under a separate schedule work, because that's not reimbursable for them. Um, so the project total that we're looking at is um eight hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. When we add in the water work, um it's nine hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars. Um, but none of the water work is before you tonight. This is just for the sidewalk. Um, or more just for the roadway improvements, including the sidewalk. Um, and I did want to touch, so um the the uh local agency agreement is through Wash Dot because Wash Dot administers federal funding that comes to the Shalanda Douglas Transportation Council. Um, right now, this is only for the, what they call the preliminary engineering, so the design phase of the project. Um, and this is for seventy-seven thousand dollars. We will be, we do have the full funding for the project, but the way this works, um a a big component of this project is right-of-way acquisition. Uh, let's see, it's between Birch and, was that Birch? Yeah, Birch and Evan.
Bird right wings.
Yeah, between Birch and Pine, we don't have the right-of-way to build sidewalk there. So based on our, w- without actually having a survey, what it looks like is our right-of-way ends is behind the back curb in that one block section. And so a large portion of this project is the right-of-way acquisition. Um, so we can't, we can't obligate funding on right-of-way until we have the preliminary design underway. So again, we will be coming back to you. We do have the full funding um for the eighty, eighty-six point five percent that's funded through federal funding. And then the city will be contributing um thirteen point five percent to the project. So what we're looking at with the seventy, I know I'm throwing all long numbers, so please ask questions as I'm rambling through this. But the seventy-seven thousand for preliminary engineering that is on if the local agency agreement for you tonight, the city will be funding ten thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars, which is thirteen point five percent. And the federal funding will make up sixty-six thousand, six hundred and five dollars, which is eighty-six point five percent. Um, and those same percentages are true throughout the ages of the project.
Any questions?
In the city specific funding, is that out of the streets fund? Correct, yeah. And then the separate portion, again, it will be tied to this project, but funded separately. The water work will be funded by the water fund.
We might have to look to REIT, so I'm up with the water.
So it's the water. Yeah, the eighty, eighty thousand was including construction, so that's.
Yeah, only ten thousand of that, only ten thousand we designed from the water fund. The remainder is starting construction.
But we can borrow from REIT, or not borrow, but we can transfer from REIT to water for for the cap.
And I guess there's something else I should have talked about here too. Um, because the right-of-way phase, uh, we're just being conservative in our timeline, and we're anticipating construction isn't until twenty twenty-six. So that way we have sufficient time to right-of-way acquisition.
I I walk there almost every day. It feels so much safer to have a sidewalk there, so much safer. So I think it's great. Are you saying, though, that we don't know for sure we can get that right-of-way from from Birch, basically Chelbaki's house, I think, up to Pine Street?
Oh, I'm not saying we can't get it. I'm just saying we have to legally acquire it.
Okay, and and we know that we have the means to do that.
Yes, and that's, that's one big portion. Um, I have.
Why is it so high?
Yeah, okay.
Um,
we need right-of-way. Um, we had had to do the same process with Pine Street.
Ah.
When when we did the major portion.
Okay.
We had quite a few parcels that we had to acquire right-of-way. And the city is not involved directly because this comes through the federal funding. There is an outside agency that is hired to do those negotiations with those property owners.
Okay, so it'll happen.
Yeah, so our consultant will hire a, our consultant will manage a a right-of-way specialist
Mm-hmm.
who will acquire those properties on our behalf. Um, I am showing here, I'm estimating the right-of-way acquisition, including um this right-of-way services and the actual acquisition itself is a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Hmm.
So that is a big portion of this project is actually the right-of-way.
Ah, okay. Thanks.
Wait a minute, Andy, you said the the uh, services and the acquisition is a hundred and some thousand dollars?
Hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay. So what's this seventy-seven thousand dollars?
So the seventy-seven thousand dollars is only for the phase that they call preliminary engineering, so the design phase of the project. We can't obligate right-of-way funding until we have right-of-way plans developed by our engineer. So we'll come back with another lo- uh local agency agreement like this one. But then, if you look at the first page of the local agency agreement, you'll see that this is all listed under PE, you see in the top left. Um, so then, once we're in the right-of-way phase, we'll be able to add that to the next line item. Even though we already have that funding, they just can't obligate it to us until until we have right-of-way plans showing that that's the phase we're in and ready to start the acquisition process.
We gotta show that we're gonna use it.
So we're just allocating money for 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 their plans.
Design.
Period, that's it.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
Leavenworth City Council moves to approve and authorize the mayor to execute the local agency agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation for the preliminary engineering phase of the Steel Drive Active Transportation Improvements Phase Two project in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars.
Seconds.
Your question, seconded by Andy. Any other questions? All those in favor, let me see your hands. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Great, we made it from the action items. Council reports, Karen.
Uh, on the thirteenth of March, I attended the Women's Exchange and the new librarian, Hannah Kwan, gave excuse me, presentation, which included her background and where and what her plans are for the Leavenworth Library. As time goes by, it's very interesting. She was super interesting. Um, on March thirteenth, also, the Friends of the Pool Working Team met at Kirk Peterson's house to get a feel for what direction and how we get started on organizing and planning. What are the priorities? Basically, the six-year tax levy needs to pass, or there is no pool. On March fourteenth, attended the PRSA meeting. Many of the pool working group attended also and shared their plans and concerns. Um, Shane, and you're, are you on the PRSA board, or on the PRSA board? And I'll let them mention anything more about that. Um, I also, excuse me, attended the Autumn League Festival Association meeting. And most of the focus was on the upcoming parade season and uh putting the folk together and um starting to work on the, our our own festival uh parade here. On March eighteenth, I attended the Shalanda Douglas Health District meeting in its new location, the Aging and Adult Care of Central Washington Building. Perfect for me, in East Wenatchee. We listened to public comments and all of the public comments we've been getting lately um from a specific group, kind of the same people, are all regarding their findings from foreign countries that the COVID vaccinations are dangerous and deadly. And they think the health department should not promote them or even give them um, even if people have to almost sign away their life that they want the shot. We went into executive session to discuss the potential litigation. Ken, is it Sisson? Kate, is that how Ken pronounces last name? Sisson, Sisson?
Ken Sisson.
Sisson.
Yeah. Um, update is on emergency preparedness and the many hours of type three incident managed team training that um three of them went under, un- underwent. Um, got uh the protestus report situation, and they're continuing to increase surveillance for protection cases with the CDHD, within the CDHD jurisdiction. It is on the rise, and it's suggested that all of us should every ten years revaccinate for tetanus, diphtheria, and protestus. And they're especially concerned about the protestus in um pregnant ladies and little babies. March eighteenth, I attended the monthly mosquito control district meeting. They are now checking larva side treatment sites and have in some areas detected larvae. Um, both Jenny Mullins and Terry Sessions sessions will be attending uh weekend training. The gun stuck in the roof of my mouth, so. And March twenty-first, onward. And March twenty-first, Osborne, the Osborne Flank Equipment Meeting, um, we, I've already been in presentation for tonight under tap fifteen, and thank you for passing that through everybody, we're so excited about it. We're gonna be on it before anybody's.
Yeah, do you get exclusive rights? Do we get exclusive, uh, grand opening rights? Yeah, I think so, don't we, John?
Okay, seconds.
And so we, I also did, uh, um, attended the downtown steering committee meeting, which I will pass on for Zeke to report on. He was expecting. And that's it, thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you, Sharon, and?
Last week I attended the Lake Transit Board meeting, uh, we had quite a long public meeting, um, associated with the original, um, taxation passed by voters in twenty-nineteen, associated with the vision twenty-twenty that, um, Nick had made part of his presentation on tonight. Um, some of the board members, over the course of the last year, had brought up the idea of taking that back to the voters and potentially repealing part of that taxation. Long-term, that would have cut over ten million dollars in, um, annual taxation and federal funding, um, in the form of grants, grant opportunities, um, that Link would just basically relinquish on an annual basis. And so, um, luckily, cooler heads prevailed and we are not sending that back to the voters to repeal. The voters have already spoken and we're going to be respecting people's votes. Um, and so that taxation stays in place, and because of that, we're actually gonna get our shuttle back this summer here in Leavenworth. So I'm really excited about that, because that was gonna be on the chopping block if this was gonna head back to the vote. So, um, I'm pretty excited about that, that was a great outcome at the Lake Transit Board meeting.
Great. Zeke?
So, I attended the, uh, we got our first finance committee meeting on the twenty-first, and basically, that was Shane and um, Ronan myself, uh, we went over the financial policy of the, of the council and spending, spending maneuvers. Um, so it was pretty basic. We talked a little about, um, debt schedules and what we're gonna hold in reserve, but we decided, um, we're gonna bring some of those items to the council for the council to make the decision on, on debt reserves, especially for lodging tax. So, um, if you wanna add anything to that, Chantel, you're welcome.
You did great.
Um, so, the steering committee, I happen to leave my notes at home. Uh, but I'll do what I can here, maybe, well, Andy's gone, anyway, I'll, uh, maybe Tom could fill in some of this stuff. We, um, we decided to, uh, we've considered going to, including two more members on the steering committee that, uh, are not property and business owners right on Front Street. And so we've, we're, we voted to expand that to where the mayor will appoint, um, property or business owners other than Front Street folks, this kind of seems where we're at right now, just to make it more inclusive and kind of responsive to the broader community, so that was one of the items. The other item we covered was, um, the bid for the, for the, uh, bathroom restoration and, what do you wanna call it?
Expansion.
Expansion. Um, came in around seventy percent over what we, uh, what the engineers' model, uh, did was, I think, Tom was like, wasn't the initial recommended with like one point one million?
It was one, yeah, the estimate was one point one five and the bid came in at two point zero three nine, so eight hundred and eighty thousand.
Right, so, um, basically, we're not, there's, somewhere, I'll let Tom kinda fill in some of this, there's some options we have. And we're, Tom and Andy are meeting with the folks who made the, there's only one taker on the bid, for one thing. Um, and so, they're gonna meet with them just to kind of clarify where the cost was because we are paying prevailing wages, which includes a great deal higher than normal. But still, it was a pause for the steering committee to go, we need to just kind of stop here, reconsider this. Um, and this is like, we made the decision, the council will make the final decision, but we've got some numbers to kind of really consider and see if this is the path forward, so that's kind of what we did in steering today, and that's the end of my report.
Right, Shane?
I also met with the, uh, Friends of Leavenworth Pool on March thirteenth. Um, they outlined some short-term, long-term goals they accumulated from members of the community, which included having more shade, uh, potentially leasing the concession standout to a local vendor to provide refreshments, uh, and the vision to have, uh, all-season pool or year-round swimming. Um, these ideas were brought to the PRSA Board meeting on March fourteenth, which I also attended. Uh, Cynthia Garza has assumed the responsibility of the school board of representative, uh, for the PRSA. And, uh, the PRSA also passed resolutions for the six-year outdoor pool maintenance and operations levy to go on the August and November ballots. Um, I also attended the Finance Committee meeting on March twenty-first, and Zeke failed to mention that he was elected as chair.
Well done, Zeke.
And that's the end of my report.
I'm glad we heard that one.
As usual, I was gonna say that and he said it first. I was at that same, um, Finance Committee meeting and, um, I think Chantel has got a good handle on things and is bringing me along, um, on the journey to understand it all.
We're gonna have more fun all year.
Oh, yeah.
Um, and I also attended the Parking Committee meeting, which was the first one that I had done. And we talked about some interesting things, parking's a big issue, um. Contractor parking downtown, when they want to use their vehicles for their toolkit and they need to park, or say they do, right in front of businesses and it looks like then, you know, trucks are parking in the plaza. Um, what that's about and how to deal with it, um. We talked about, uh, oh, I got Zeke with voted chair, okay, and we talked about, um, free parking for locals one day a week downtown in the slower season, which I'm totally in favor of, so I was happy about that, being one option. Um, and then making the prices for parking a little less all over the board, depending on day or month or time, and, and making it easier to work with for our staff. So, um, both those were really interesting meetings. I also coincidentally have a friend who serves on the, um, Planning Commission for East Wenatchee. And we were talking, I said, what's up? And she said, it's about housing and, um, how they're strategizing to deal with that in East Wenatchee. And so we had a pretty interesting conversation about that, too. That's my report for today.
Great. That was no important, alright. Um, I was just today down with the, the tri-commission, which is the Port Authority, the Shalane PUD and the county commissioners gather quarterly and just kind of do together strategizing and sharing what's going on with each of them. But one of the really kind of neat, interesting things is happening. And I think we mi- I might have mentioned this on a previous, because last fall it was brought up the fact that we actually have a weather dead zone in Shalane County where the weather reports, um, fly, the radars that usually give all of that weather that you get off your TV and the radios, flies right over the top of us, only catches things that are above ten thousand feet and all of the volatile things that happen are below that. So it creates a difficulty for, um, aircraft, um, for emergency services, for firefighting, I mean, all of those things happen at, at a lower. So they've been trying to, the port's been taking the lead in, um, trying to kind of fill that gap. And it was fun, we had a, um, a company that was, um, there today to demonstrate what they do and they're, they go and install these much smaller units that, that are much, they don't cover the, as big of an area, but they cover it actually more, um, significantly detailed. Um, and they're plugging these gaps throughout the, and, and it's privately funded. And then they do a subscription service to a lot of different outfits that are looking for those. Um, and they are in Wenatchee now to, to work with the port on identifying the spots that could possibly be, and they, they front-load all of this and then, like I said, recover it through leases. And also, um, so they've been working with the, the delegation too, with both our senators and with, um, Representative Schreier about, um, some federal funding to tie in and support it so that it would integrate with the, um, the NOAA stuff, the, the, the federal stuff that, that does the majority and covers the majority that flies right over us. So it was pretty exciting because, um, one of the big things that it'll help do is identify lightning strikes and lightning storms and things like that, much more detailed than we currently are capable of doing. So as, as a community that's got that, um, I guess that quote honor of being uh, that, uh, community that's most threatened by potential fire. Um, yeah, it was just fun to hear how far along that's come and just since last fall, but, um, yeah. And so that's my report. Salbi? Yeah, come on. He's down in Oregon.
So I, I, somebody already, already, uh, gave my, I already gave my report. The only thing that I was gonna share today was the, uh, the news from HUD, um, that our technical correction for that, uh, grant, which formerly was called A Place for Alice, it is now called Leavenworth, uh, Affordable Housing and Community Rescreation Grant, something along those lines. Um, so that's good news from HUD, um, and good news for the playground and the pool, um, and meant, hopefully. Um, and as the mayor said, I am in Seaside, Oregon for the rest of the week at the Northwest Regional Managers Conference, uh, spent the day driving down, got to see the beach for a second, and, um, and, uh, I'll be at the conference for the next three days and back at the office on Monday. So I got.
Thank you. And Dell?
Just a couple of quick items, April budget amendment, been working on it for weeks, it's, it's gonna be done by this weekend, um, so it can get into your next packet. We can definitely revisit the funding for Osborne. At this point, I do have the entire amount in, included in the general fund, but as we progress through this, we can definitely make an adjustment to that if necessary. The PRSA annual report, I have reviewed that one for that entity and finalized it and submitted it. So one down, about four other annual reports to go. Uh, timing of the Osborne is uniquely wonderful, in my opinion, because I'm currently working on the ARPA report that is due each year until we spend and close out the funds. And their funding cycle goes through March thirty-first. So I'll be able to report next week when I get into their system and file the annual report that we have committed our five hundred and sixty-six thousand, which was due to be done by the end of this year. So we're, we're ahead of the game, we'll actually have it fully expended. We still have till twenty-twenty-six to expend it, but it sounds like we'll have it all spent. And just on a final note, uh, the accounts payable PRSA clerk vacancy position, we did have that out. We had the first call, we received initially six applications, we conducted four interviews. Yesterday. Um, of that, we are definitely gonna be advancing some folks to a second round of interviews and some testing to, to whittle them down a little further. But there's definitely several that are very highly, uh, exciting to me and we're looking forward to getting this finalized, hopefully by mid-April. You know, they may have to give a few weeks' notice, so if nothing else, we should have somebody hired today.
Thank you, Mayor, just a couple of quick updates, uh, Councilwoman Reister pointed to this. The Front Street Restrooms bid, yes, was over by eight hundred and eighty thousand. Public Works staff actually reached out to several of the plan holders and just, and it was Andy, and Andy just asked questions like, hey, what could we have done better, what we pay the project, and the consensus was, great project. The size of the project is too big for small contractors, it's perfect for medium-sized contractors and too small for large contractors, and that medium, I guess, sized contractor group, too busy, swamped. They're like, well, coming, should we wait, they're like, there's nothing they can do better, they're just too busy. So the next city council may, may be faced with, with a decision. So I mean, there's some options we can consider, but we'll talk about it later, so. Uh, a couple of other things, Mark Fabiar, just wanna give him a shout-out, he passed his, uh, he obtained his Cross Connection Control Special Certification. We have the last downtown sewer lining segment going as we speak, so knock on wood, hopefully that goes well. And next, of course, is restoration. Shout-out to Rick and his team for repairing a water leak out East Leavenworth Row. We actually have a second water leak that's going on right now down in Chaminck Park, that's next on the list. Speaking of Chaminck Park, I just wanna give a shout-out to John and his team for addressing some graffiti down there. We had a pretty good spell of no graffiti and we recently got tagged down at Chaminck, so bummer there. Hopefully it's not a pattern like we've seen in the past. And last but not least, I do wanna give a special shout-out to John Chans and his leadership on the Neighbor Playground Committee. He led and facilitated all those committee meetings and so, I just wanna. That's it, my report.
Great, well, that wraps up our reports, and I think the next thing is an adjournment.
I'd love to adjourn.
All those in favor? Hey, if you don't vote, you gotta stay here.